Good afternoon, everybody. We're gonna call this workshop to order. This is our September ninth, twenty twenty one, ARPA Workshop. American Rescue Plan Act. This time, we're gonna have the invocation and the pledge allegiance. Will everyone please stand? By his, dear heavenly Father, we come before you right now, thanking you for another opportunity to serve. And to do things according to your will, yes, that you be with us, that you allow us to do things with dignity and honor, and we do things according to your plan, Christ name, pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go on, please.
Mayor Terrell, Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill. For the record, Commissioners Justin Campbell and Will Jones are not present.
Commissioner Campbell's in transit. And we have a forum. We'll move forward with our public comments at this time. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No act will be taken on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? If you're here, please fill out the yellow speakers card in the back of the room. Or you can use the YouTube chat function. Well, you can't use YouTube chat function. And we have our, you also have a dial-in function as well, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero. And so you can still drop your comments in YouTube if you choose to. First up is Mr. Daniel Valancourt. Did you come forward? Just give us your name and address for the record.
Blue light. Hi, my name is Daniel Valancourt, Valancourt Construction. I live at five six zero zero Millie Way, which is Green Cove Springs, Florida. It's Southern Clay County. I'm here just to introduce myself. I've been working with the Airport Advisory Board about building a corporate aircraft hangar at Placca Airport. They haven't made a recommendation yet on anything, but they have some concerns that we're trying to work through together that are very reasonable. We live, our office is in Green Cove, again, Southern Clay County. You know, I do all my shopping here in Placca. I kind of Placca all the time. Placca Airport's beautiful. And one of the, one of the things we're trying to do is build a corporate aircraft hangar at, at the airport. And it does, you know, there is a, a plan, a long-term plan that's been adopted previously. I think it was like six or seven years old, something like that. And it, it does comport with all, all of that. And I'm hoping that by next month, the advisory board can say yea or nay to if my ideas is good. If they recommend it or not, they're, they're gonna present it to you. I just didn't want the first time you saw, heard from me would be them coming saying, hey, you know, we think you should approve this. Again, so we're Valancourt Construction. We, we do employ a bunch of Putnam County and Placca residents. It's a fantastic city. And again, I just wanted to introduce myself. And if you have any questions for me or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Okay, and Mr. Valancourt, if you can just kind of also tell the commission what your recent experiences you've had with the airport and for, and how certain clients come through.
Okay, so we, we, we're growing. We have about five hundred employees. We're growing. Our footprint is expanding. So we have a lot of need to get to places quickly. We're a heavy site construction company. We also do a lot of equipment purchasing on secondary markets, so I have to travel to find the equipment I'm trying to buy. It's very, very difficult to get equipment new, especially you're talking thirty, three to six months to get anything new, and prices are outrageous. So there's a big need for us to travel quickly. And right now, we're using a NetJets membership to accommodate some of that travel. And we, we do, we do use Placca Airport as our, one of our main points of, because this is so close to us. So we're, NetJets is coming and picking us up. But I have an aircraft that I want to store there so that I can, I can use it for commercial purposes, or use it for our business to, to go point A to point B quickly. That's pretty much, pretty much it right now. But it's, like I said, you guys have a fantastic airport. I mean, it is, is awesome.
Definitely. Welcome to, welcome to Black. We definitely appreciate you using the airport as well.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or any commissioner comment?
Thanks for investing in, in Placca.
Yes, sir. It's our pleasure. And we hope to get to know you guys even more. And if you ever need anything, you know, just reach out anytime.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let the director reflect. Both Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Campbell are here with us. All members are present in the county floor.
Mayor, may I ask Mr. Valancourt to fill out the yellow speakers card?
He has already.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? If we have anything online, if you don't have anything, if there's no one else here for public comment, we'll go ahead and, ma'am. Okay, if you can fill out for me, once you finish speaking, that'd be perfect. Just give your, just introduce your, introduce yourself and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Donna B. I live at four zero four eight, Overlake Drive, Placca, Florida. I came to the meeting. My, my first number one question is, before you guys decide anything, can you tell us what we are allowed to use the money for? Because I read online that there are
That's purpose of me.
Something, we just can't spend it on anything we want. Okay? And to also look at what is going to be the greater good for the most amount of people in our area.
Perfect. Stay tuned. That's what we're here for today.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? If you can't just fill that card out for me right there on the wall? Is there anyone else? Seeing no one at this time, we're going to go to public hearing, and we will move on to our discussion of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And you want to go ahead and take this, Ms. Shank? Do you want to start us out, Mr. Holmes, before we get going?
Mayor, um. Together presentation for you with the idea of basically just starting the process of allowing you to make your focus, which got with expenditure of the ARPA funds that you've heard much about in the last few weeks, that you know we all have about almost five million dollars. That is available, but it can't be spent on projects other than those that have been approved or that are eligible based on the guidance we're receiving. Ms. Shank has put together what I believe is a good, informative presentation of the general and then subcategories of, of types of things that you could spend the money on. And we don't really need a decision today, but we're hoping this is the start of a process that will allow you to give staff some direction as to how you wish us to go in trying to put together some eligible projects for, for spending the money which has to be spent in two years. Is that correct?
By December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And then it has to, we'll go over that in the presentation.
Dispersed over to your period, dispersed over to your period.
Okay, so with that, I have nothing further. Unless you have questions.
Let's move into the presentation.
So at our, at our last commission meeting, we did sign the agreement with Department of Emergency Management that was executed and sent off for them to execute and then return to us. The total of the ARPA funding that we're going to be receiving is five million, two hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. All of these funds are subject to statutory requirements, which means that they have to be used for a specific cost that is outlined in this presentation. And they can only be expensed during the period that began on March third of twenty twenty one, and it will end on December thirty first of twenty twenty four. Any funds that we do not use do have to be returned to the treasury. And this does qualify for single federal audit, so we will be required to do a single audit on these funds.
Tell mine, would you back up, Sonny? That'd be the case that the funds have to be expanded by December thirty one.
But incurred.
Award.
Could you, Michael?
So award funds for the financial obligations incurred by December thirty first, twenty twenty four must be expended by December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Right, so there's a difference between when we incur them and when we have to have the money spent?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that we, that accruals.
Next up, there are seven broad categories and sixty-six subcategories of eligible uses that have been determined by the IRS. So the first one is response to public health concern raised by the pandemic. Second one is response to negative economic impacts of the pandemic. Third is services to disproportionately impacted communities. Fourth is premium pay to essential workers, private and public. Five, improvements to water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Six, replacement of lost revenue by local governments due to pandemic. And seven is administrative costs. So the first one that we'll go over is the public health concerns that are raised by the pandemic. And everything that we're gonna go over in this presentation, these are eligible expenses. They've been verified by the interim final ruling as well as the reporting guidelines that have been put out this, from the treasury, as well as the League of Cities. You will, I do want to note too, there is a little upwards arrow and then also a star. If you see an upward arrow, that means that these funds have to be evidence-based interventions. If there's a star, that means that we must report on projects that primarily serve disadvantages, disadvantaged communities using demographic distribution. So there are specific requirements that go along with these. So it isn't kind of a free-for-all with the money. You have to have certain requirements behind them. Do you have any questions as far as responses to public health concerns raised by the pandemic?
No, I, I'll just add that. If the commission recalls, we gave approval a few months ago. I guess last year with the pandemic to Mr. Jones, when Deandre Jones and Ida Wright, and those were, and the Batum Cookman group was on to do a to actually do grant applications to, for COVID education in underserved communities. This kind of falls right within this category. It was something that we approved and we saw as necessary during that time. So it may be an opportunity for us to look at that, even though we weren't awarded the grant. It creates an opportunity to further educate folks on some of the health concerns, some of the other issues that are out there. And when you look at our health numbers, it's a perfect opportunity to at least start to identify. Go ahead.
I do want to know on this one, PPE does not have any restrictions. So moving forward, that is something that we could spend the ARPA money on as any, anything since March third that we've bought as far as PPE. All right, so the second one that we'll go over is the response to negative economic impacts of the pandemic. This can be food programs, rent, mortgage, and utility aid. Cash transfers, internet access programs, eviction prevention, unemployment benefits, or cash assistance to unemployed workers, job training assistance, small business economic assistance, aid to nonprofit organizations, aid to tourism, travel, or hospitality, and also rehiring public sector staff. I will note on these that if the commission wishes to move forward with these types of programs, I believe that we would need additional staff to provide these programs.
Any questions or comments?
And we can use part of that money to hire additional staff, right?
Correct, yes.
And we may want to consider not necessarily hiring staff, but contracting with someone to administer. For instance, if it was a rent, mortgage, and utility aid program, we don't have in-house expertise on how to set that program up and equitably administer it. So that's just an example. But if you were to take something like that, we probably would want to look at something in the nature of perhaps a contract to, to have a, someone administer that kind of program.
Yeah, so you've got groups like Kristin Services Center, for example, that do that regularly, that create opportunities. If you recall, the county used the United Way out of St. John's County to help them when they administered distributions. And they had some other local nonprofits that they brought on board to partner with to do certain things and keep data. I think the, the critical piece is to make sure we, you know, kind of tell them what exactly it is we want them to do. Any other questions on this section? Okay.
Next, so, yeah, I have a question. So we could actually give a, to some of the nonprofits contract with them, and we could also provide them financial help as well to get their programs up.
That is correct, yes.
Is there a limit? Are we gonna set the limits or?
We have to set, we set our limits for whatever categories and how we want to do the scopes on them. The biggest thing is you, whatever it is that you pick as part of your plan, then you start to set how, how your distribution of your, your resources is gonna be.
Now, also to understand that the county get some of the same money. And I don't think we want to duplicate the same efforts. Are, are we gonna kind of like collaborate with them? And well, I guess not. Maybe we service just people in the city, of course. And they may put parameters. They're only gonna help people on the outside of the municipality. Is that been said yet? I think your point's very well taken, and I think that we all contemplate that we'd be working with the county to determine what area they're gonna service, how they're going to move forward, and, and then try to complement them, or at least not duplicate what they're doing.
And, and just so that you know, the staff's already sat in on ARPA planning for the county already and had separate meetings from the management team with the county as well to talk about ARPA.
Yeah, I, I just wouldn't want, you know, the money run out because people double-dip. But I also want to be able to help everybody. So we want to make sure that, you know, nobody's left out.
Correct. It's definitely noted that we wouldn't want to do duplication to organizations. We would want to make sure that we're transparent with the county as well as in discussion with them as far as what they're doing.
Three. Anything else on two? Move into three.
Services to disproportionately impacted communities. This ranges from education assistance, healthy childhood environment, housing support, which, under that one, the only thing, or sorry, there's two under that one, and then also social determinants of health. And you will note on all of these that you see they do have stipulations behind them as far as what the city has to identify or report.
And I think one of the critical pieces to this one that you look, when you look at it, is affordable housing. And affordable housing has various components in it. And so it's, it's an opportunity for us to really look at one, you know, our, one of our four main priorities initially identified by this commission. And see if there's an opportunity for us to kind of, to, to kind of push the meter as it relates to affordable housing and also community violence intervention.
Yeah. And unhoused person too. Those three is how, at least how my list too, so, yeah.
Yeah. And then the other part is, I think, when you look at, where it says aid to high poverty districts, you look at what we have, you know, just a mix of economically of what's in the city. Many, many places within our city are gonna be communities that are, are so served at the, the low to moderate income levels. And poverty does run rampant, and it may be opportunities for us to be able to creatively implement some programming that we wouldn't necessarily have before to make those things happen. And so I, I think those are the places where the commission has this category out of all gives you the greatest ability to really push forward some of the things that you've kind of had in your mind that you didn't necessarily have the ability to push out before, and it allows us to be able to help people and not just places. So, any additional commentary, Ms. Shank? And so Ms. Shank has worked tirelessly on, on this particular plan and, you know, dug deep into the weeds of some of the things that are permissible. And so I would encourage everybody, if you get an opportunity to really talk to her in detail.
So when are we gonna sit down and prioritize what we're gonna?
Today.
Today?
This is the first start of it. So this is the educational piece. The next piece of this is gonna be going back, absorbing everything that you have, and using, I think, the commentary that we give during the presentation gives, gives some insight to staff as to how we start to put together the plan. And then everybody has an opportunity to really start to, to push out the things that are priority before we, before we start putting numbers to it and getting deeper into how we plan to approach.
Correct. We'd really have to narrow down the scope of where the commission would like to do the greater good for the community and where we can really make an impact. And from there, you know, I've given you additional handouts. I know it's a lot of information. Believe me, I've been reading over it pretty tirelessly. It's a lot of information out there. But staff is also speaking to see what other communities are doing as well.
And you got dashboards that are available so that if the commission wants to look at what other places are doing, as well as staff looking at what other communities are doing, is the perfect time. And so those are all things that we have in place. Anything else on three? Move into four.
Premium pay to essential workers, private and public. The premium pay is, does allow for not only the salary or wages, but also benefits as well. So that is something that we found in the interim final ruling. It does allow for pay as well as benefits. So I do want to note that.
Any questions?
When we talk about benefits, share with that, because I think it's something that we can't, they can't give into the pension, or it can't be associated with the pension.
So we cannot make a payment to our pension fund as far as if, let's say you were going, I don't want to give an example, but we cannot make a payment to the pension fund that is ineligible. I'll back check on that.
I actually would like an example because I'm kind of I actually would like an example, cause I kinda like Ms. McCaskill. I'm a visual learner person. So we could pay some, for example, we're talking about bringing someone in to administrate this, this grant. I mean, this, uh, this, this assistant. So will we bring them on as a full-time employee or just contract for the period of the next four, three years?
Actually, I think administration is one of your next slides. So if you're talking about actually helping with the administration of the grant, I think that that's covered under a subsequent slide. And as to whether we bring them on as an employer or not, problem with funding employees with grant money is the grant money goes away.
Right.
So, and then you still got the employee and you've got everything associated with that. So I think you're, if you do that or go that route, I think you're looking at a contract basis.
And, and just so, because we're in workshop mode, there, we only got a handful of people in the audience. So if you got a question, just kinda raise your hand and we'll see if it's something that, you know, we can definitely have info.
In the interim final ruling, there is actually a definition for premium pay. And it says that premium pay means an amount of up to $13 an hour that is paid to an eligible worker in addition to wages for that worker. But that speech amount may not exceed $25,000. Premium pay will be considered to be in addition to wages. And it goes on to specify which, which categories of employees would be considered in that essential workers category.
It could be, it could be our essential workers.
Correct.
Our city essential workers.
That is correct.
And the only thing it'd be exempt from is paying into the pension piece, right?
Correct.
In the city, that mean if we chose that route and we would have to take it from whatever fund and pay into that.
The additional piece.
Okay, that's.
Well, would the premium pay require contribution towards pension? Or would it just be considered something in the nature of a, you know, a stipend that's not, that's different from salary? I mean, that would be the question that would have to be answered. If you paid, yeah, if you paid 13 an hour extra, my initial thought would be that would not be considered salary, which would require pension contribution. But I'm just making a common sense assessment, and that doesn't always work real well in these kinds of.
That makes really good sense. I mean, I think stipend would be, I think, more appropriate from that respect. Okay, I mean, that is pretty clear.
Any other questions on that one? Alright, number five is improvements to water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. And this is in three different categories, or sorry, four different categories. Clean water, drinking water, and broadband, so it is three. With this one, we have talked about looking over our current CIP plan to see if we do have eligible projects that we could essentially use the ARPA funding to fund those projects. We could potentially go out maybe 10 to 15 years of CIP of projects that we planned on or maybe not had funding to do to bring the city a little bit further ahead as far as clean water and drinking water and broadband.
And we talked about a couple, and Jonathan can explain more, but understanding that we've got a finite amount of money and, you know, the commission's priorities are gonna determine where that money is, is, is applied. But there are some things that would require limited amounts of money that could save money and still provide benefit, including Jonathan pointed out, we kind of have made arrangements for filters for our water plant. But we could, we could accommodate additional filters to provide for additional capacity with the growth that we're seeing, the additional customers that are coming online and what we see we have in the future. That could be something that could be of benefit from a number of different perspectives. We talked about picking out a segment of water lines, for instance, where we might have a pocket of water lines that are bad, and you've got good water lines on the downhill side of that and good water lines on the uphill side of that. But you got a pocket of bad in the middle, which taints the water below to see if there were any, you know, finite pockets of those that we could work with. So those are just some of the things that we had batted around. Huge projects are gonna be pretty much out of the question because of the cost. There's two northside projects that we already have kind of on the, on the, on the plan. But Jonathan, we asked Jonathan, take a look at what the projected cost of those are, and they're about seven million bucks. So, you know, they, they probably wouldn't be something we could, we could work into this. But there might be something smaller. Like I said, there may be pockets here and there, we could do some good for a lot of people on, you know, with a relatively manageable amount of funds.
And potentially safe, because with some of those projects, we anticipated debt service to come with them. So that's gonna be a cost savings to residents as well.
And save on maintenance too. If we got a section of bad water lines, you know what that does to us on maintenance. So just things to throw in the, in the mix. But as I said, we all understand that you're gonna set what your, your primary focus is, and then we'll work with that from there.
Yeah, I think a good example of that, Jonathan, is when you look at projects like we, like we had our phases from fifth to 14th, you know, maybe even breaking part of that phase down, which gets us further ahead than we were before. And it, it allows us, it frees up some of the SRF funds for, you know, to do additional stuff. And so that's probably a good example of portable, of potable line replacement where it, it'll fit the criteria. And you wanna give any other specific examples that kind of come to mind on infrastructure projects, which would be something that's food for thought for the commission? And then maybe we give a, kind of a, maybe a top 10 list of things that could be considered and, and how to break it down monetarily.
So is Mandy on the call? Okay, I didn't wanna steal her thunder, but I guess I got to. So we received notification that the last phase of the St. John's Avenue reconstruction project is funded by Florida Department of Transportation. So, yeah, some good news, that's from the railroad tracks back up Mosley. Big project, needed project, probably the worst road in the city. There's a reason I don't drive that way. But top 10, stuff like that comes to mind. You mentioned, and Don mentioned, the northeast and northwest section. That's a big project, but, you know, that's kind of the last phase or last three phases to kind of square everything off using Mosley as a delineating, delineating line north, south in the city. You know, we're at 15 miles of potable line replaced now out of the 66 that was identified some years back. This may help you get a little bit farther along in that process. You know, we did not expect to get anywhere near 30. But, you know, you could potentially see taking this to kind of fast forward a few of those projects. And I mentioned the St. John's Avenue project because that means that we're gonna have to use the SRF, the remaining SRF funds to match that, to do that water line replacement, since we're ripping that road up. You know, we got 7.6 million with that 2.9 million over there. And downtown is pretty much gonna eat into the remaining loan funds that you have. So the only other option is to start putting money away on an annual basis. But as Don said, those projects can cost anywhere from a couple million up to seven million. It's gonna take a while, save enough money to do another project or go get more SRF. But, you know, that's another $200,000 to $300,000 annual payment. So I'd be thinking about waterline projects. Another concern that I would share with you is these capital projects sometimes take two years to get done. And that doesn't even include what we call the entitlement or the permitting phase. So if you're talking about a big project, you probably need to think about the ones that we already have on the books, the ones that are already planned for the next couple of years.
And remember, the price keeps going up.
Well, I think the other part is just to make sure that once we start talking about when the project accrues as opposed to when the completion date hits, and that's what, that 2026 date becomes critical because we can fund the project and still find ourselves in a position where a delay puts us out of compliance. So.
You do have a few more projects out at the wastewater treatment plant. There is the project that Don mentioned, that the water treatment plant, which we're under consent order for, but we did just get notification that we were listed for state revolving loan funds. You could supplement that, as he suggested, to gain some additional capacity. You know, our plant, we have plenty of capacity committed to growth. The problem is we aren't putting an equivalent size or number of filters in to treat to that capacity. It's being designed in such a fashion where we can add them as needed, and it's pretty easy to do. But maybe an, an easy project to kind of cross off the list and make us a little better prepared for this growth that we're seeing.
Yeah. And so even from the, and I guess we'll get into some of the utility stuff in a second. Even from the utility side with the gas authority in here. We wanna pull into that now. Let's go. You got anything that, any thoughts as far as gas authority, as, as anything that the gas authority would have that would follow up on the ARPA? You can come up to the mic as well. Yeah.
We have expansions and, and expanding our territory all the time as growth is coming on. We wanna target. We've bounced around ideas of extending to other communities to interlock in perhaps or other things. That doesn't affect us financially here, except that it's part of our revenue. You know, part of our revenue goes to the city and we, we would reap the benefits of any growth that we did as a community. We have a compressed natural gas station that is in bad need of repairs. As we look at alternative fuels and cleaner burning fuels, that's something that could be enhanced.
What are your costs on your CNG stuff, when you're CNG system?
Well, we really are in need of, of dispensers. They're run about 15 grand a piece. And, you know, upgrading it that way would really help. Maybe then we could look at some fleets and getting some more vehicles on compressed natural gas. Those are some thoughts I have.
Okay, appreciate, we appreciate, we appreciate that.
Yes, sir. I'll just say on the question, I mean, with your sensors, you said they run about 15,000 a piece. But how many, how many sensors do you think you need?
I'm sorry, dispensers, the, like, they look like the gas pumps that you have up there, but they pump compressed natural. We have two of them up there now, and really only one works right now. Which causes a problem for the garbage trucks, which you've probably heard about. So we, we try to keep them going, but that, that's certainly a need.
Okay.
Number six is for replacement of lost revenue by local governments due to the pandemic. It is not my recommendation to go this route at all. Actually, the city is faring very well because of the pandemic. So as far as estimates that we had for revenues coming in, we're doing just fine. I, I don't recommend dipping into this portion.
And there were a couple.
This category.
And there were a couple of critical areas where at the beginning of the pandemic, we didn't think we would fare as well, and surprisingly, those areas rebounded and exceeded in some places.
Tails tax is one of them, communication service practice is another. So we can go ahead and jump to the last category, which is your administrative cost. This does cover administrative expenses, evaluation and data analysis, as well as transfers to other units of government.
You wanna talk about caps?
I'm sorry.
Categorical caps at all? Or cost limitations? Do you see any areas of concern as it relates to how we use the cost?
Not in what I've read, but.
What, what are your administrative, do you have a cap on administrative expenses that you can incur? In other words, is there a percentage or anything of that nature that's allocated to administrative costs in comparison to the total award that we have?
No.
It's just being able to justify the expense.
There'd be some type of cap in the areas.
There, there could be, and, you know, in the interim final ruling, but, you know.
This, this has not been a clear picture. And we've asked for guidance from the league, and they basically said, ask your, your legal attorney. I mean, your, uh, city attorney. I'm sorry? Yeah, but in all fairness to everyone, you know, you're looking at and have a experience where the rules are being made as, almost as you go.
Kind of like CARES Act.
I'm sorry?
Like CARES money was.
Yeah, exactly. So it'd be, I think it'd be unfair to expect someone to give you a whole set of rules and guidelines because I think they're being made as we go. But we'll get, we'll get as much guidance as we can on anything that you, any question that you have. And we'll reach out to other entities, which is what we've been doing. But as far as there being like a, an easy primer that you can go to the league or someone else for, it just doesn't exist.
They will not give you an opinion.
And, I'm sorry. Did you reach out to any other counties as to what their, their cities?
So I've actually reached out to, of course, my own personal contacts, city and Fennell, as well as my former employer Flagler County. Flagler County does have a website they have posted for the residents to go on and see what they've decided on that they will be spending the money on. I do recommend the city do something similar to let our residents know, once we do have a plan formed.
And I'll just mention one final thing. Obviously, all of us understand the issues we've been dealing with in terms of workforce. There may be some opportunities in that regard here as far as trending incentives, whatever the case might be in, in terms of trying to, you know, attract people to our, to our workforce.
And so the other thing is, we've also, we've got the Miramar Plan. So we have Miramar, we've got Daytona. If you go to the National League of Cities website, they've got a, you've got a guide to what some of the expenditures are that come out, Portland League of Cities, Florida League of Mayors, all those places are putting up constantly within different chats. And then the other piece I think is critical for us is with the amount of contacts that we have statewide, you know, just sitting up on this dais alone, it creates the perfect opportunity to make a call to one of your colleagues and say, hey, shoot me your ARPA plan. So for example, a lot of, a lot of the entitlement cities, all the cities that have populations over 50,000, they got direct dispersionals, they didn't have to wait for the county in order to get their money. And so, so for example, Mayor Daley in Tallahassee is sending me the comprehensive plan that he has. They're actually going through their meetings at the same time that we are. And so, and they've got a lot of citizen-based programs inside of it. But of course, Tallahassee gets a significantly larger amount of money than we get. The other places that you're gonna get guidance are gonna be from your local representatives. And so it creates opportunities to talk to them as well. But the, the bottom line is, it's a moving target. And you can, because people are creatively thinking of ways in which they can use resources based upon these categories. And in those categories, you know, the, the stuff that we're getting right now from Ms. Shank comes with a lot of research and a lot of digging into the weeds just to get the pieces that you have now. It's, there's not much guidance, there's a whole bunch of literature, but there's not a whole bunch of guidance on how to spend. And, you know, the biggest thing is, it's gonna be a shot in the wind, no different than CARES Act funding was. I think the only difference is we've got a bigger piece of the puzzle, and we can ascertain ways that we can use it to help people to promote projects that we've had in the past and really create additional initiatives while transitioning to a better position financially, long-term for the city.
The biggest concern is that the city is on the hook for repayment of this, whereas with the CARES Act, the county was.
But they'd look to us. I mean, if it had been our money, they'd look to us.
But, but the other part of it is, um, I think when you look at how we use these resources, we just wanna make sure that we think through it methodically, because there are gonna be projects in here that you can use this for that will truly change the way certain, you know, certain things are. And it'll, it'll help us. And it'll, it'll help us in the, in the long run. And I think more than anything else, we want to make sure that we put people over projects.
I know, like the mayor said, with all the different contacts we have across the state between everybody that sits, sits up here. Um, I'm certainly gonna push it out to the Northeast Florida League of Cities, our region. And so, and see what they're doing. We're, we're up in F B C Leo, Florida League of Cities, so everybody here is serving on various boards. So we have quite a few contacts, so we'll, we'll be able to.
Even when we did CARES funding, just so the commission know. As we were anticipating the funding that was coming from the county. And I think at that time, there was, you know, there wasn't any idea as to what we would be allocated. We knew that we would have an ask. We looked at the idea of bringing in a consultant who could help us. As we began to make requests for certain allocations. And we actually had, what was it, Mr. Holmes, three, I think it was three, three different consultants at that time. Who we spoke to about the opportunities, you know. But when we had that conversation with the county about whether it would be something that was reimbursed, even though we knew it was something that was reimbursable in other communities. They were like, no, we wouldn't reimburse that expense. And we knew that other communities had hired and been reimbursed. But, but I think this, but when you look at ARPA, it's a different situation. Because the administrative costs are already built into the program. And so.
And the administration truly falls on the city at this point, whereas before it was on the county.
And then even at, at F L C this year, there were a few companies that came out who are actually doing. ARPA fund, they're doing ARPA planning and administration. And we got an opportunity to see them present and as, as well as, you know, they were around. And I don't know if anybody got a chance to talk to any of the other ones, but there were a few that were there that we got a chance, that I got a chance to speak to. And I know that some of the commissioners actually participated in the ARPA symposium that was there as well.
One, one difference is that with CARES Act, we weren't given a set number. We were basically asking, given the opportunity to make requests. And we came up with requests and basically everything we asked for was funded. This is a little different in that we have a set number. So for instance, with CARES Act, if we had added fifty thousand for admin. And it was approved, it would have been added to everything else we got. In this situation, you've got the five-two and whatever you put into admin is taken away from what you have left to spend on projects. I just mentioned that. It appears that some of the people around us are looking at the prospect of using admin. If it involves a program that you don't have expertise in running, like for instance, some of the community programs that we referenced. And I believe slide two. But if it's something that, that doesn't involve that, not getting admin involved because of the. Or not farming out the admin because of the cost involved with that now. You know, we have some expenses that we've, are going to be facing that we didn't think were, were eligible. But we're seeing some other entities looking for them, like a fire truck. I'm not saying we've spent money on a fire truck, I'm saying we're seeing somebody else spend money on a fire truck. Radios that we're going to have coming up at five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So, I mean, those are things out there. And maybe just as a suggestion for you to think about. If you were able to somehow divide up in your minds or in a plan for us. The percentages that you'd like to see going to certain causes. I don't know how many priorities y'all are going to end up with, you know, three, four, five, whatever it might be. Or two or one, whatever, whatever you think, however you think you're going to get the best bang for your buck. But if you have more than one or two, it might help from the outset for us to, for you to kind of articulate to us. What percentage of the five-one you'd want to go to infrastructure, if any? What percentage to go to some of those programs on slide two? And then we can try to help, you know, a little bit with that. But if you come up with one project that you think's going to be, it's going to require the vast majority of it, then of course that'll be. That'll be, you know, that'll, that may make the other, the process of apportioning it academic, because it may all go in one spot or almost one spot.
And I do want to say I would truly love for each of you, if you have questions. Or there's a specific program in your mind that you think you want to potentially volley up. I'd love to take the time to dissect it with you to see what it looks like in the reporting aspect. Are these truly ineligible expense? Because I'd hate for, in the public setting, it to be said, and then we can't fulfill that promise. So on my side, I've been doing a lot of research behind the eligible expenses, as well as how they get reported. And the certain criteria that goes behind them as well.
And you're probably going to get more guidance every day. And that's, that's the nature of the beast. You're probably going to hear more about what you can't do. Maybe not what you can do, but you're probably going to hear more about what you can't do every day.
I think if we look at the, the C I P projects that we have on the list or whatever. And see how we can best utilize it and then shift some. Then we can start applying some of those other fundings to some of these other programs. Because if that's our biggest bang for the buck, like the mayor was saying, some of those C I P projects. I think that we're going to get a bigger bang for the buck, especially with the timeframe that we have to work with.
Anything else from the commission? Anything else from staff?
Yes, off of me.
The next slide is just based on what we've read so far and what's been put out by the league. Ineligible expenses do include payments to pension funds, rainy day funds, as well as financial reserves or outstanding debt. Premium pay, you cannot pay for telework employees. And then of course, projects or services that all tie to seven spending categories. And then I have a slide for questions.
All right, let me start. Any questions from the audience?
Name is Donna B. four zero four eight Silver Lake Drive, Palacca, Florida.
Can you cut the mic on, but just cut that, mess that button, the lights on?
No, I'm not, but I'm high challenged.
Vertically challenged.
Donna B D, set four zero four eight Silver Lake Drive, Block of Florida. In the discussion, one of the things I noticed that was not mentioned at all was broadband, okay?
Infrastructure.
Yes, it was.
It's, it's a part of the infrastructure conversation.
But it was, we talked about water, we talked about sewer, I wrote down notes. Broadband was never mentioned, okay? So this is something that is important, to me, very important, especially here in Palacca, because we have limited resources. Sometimes we don't have such good internet and we all know that. And I think as we move forward and we start growing, we need that. Because I think we're going to have more teleworkers. My own personal opinion.
Well, I think the other piece is, and, and we've had the conversation about broadband extensively. We've got an I T expert on the commission as well. But when you look at where we are, we've talked about being able to increase the strains of broadband. Something Mr. Griffin has talked about consistently. So, no, we're, we're definitely well aware, but we appreciate the comment.
Okay, thank you.
So if you go back and look at a number five, it's a.
There are regulations behind that as well. If we were to go the broadband route, we'd have to ensure that the projects have certain upload speeds. That is in the interim final ruling, you can find that in there. So, you know, as I said, there's, there's just so much information out there that, you know, if, for instance, broadband is one of your projects. That you'd like to discuss, I'd love to sit down and just kind of go over all of them with you. And what we have out there in the city that, you know, Jonathan or Mr. Holmes may know about.
So Mr. Griffin, you want to give us a quick, a, a quick knee on the, on the strands? Just a two-second conversation when Mr. Shank finishes? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two-second version. One second, Lauren, you want to finish?
Nope, that's it. I'll give it right to something.
Well, I think we need to talk to Larry Harvey. He was recently appointed to, I guess, a state board over broadband. And he's probably more informed as to, you know, where our deficiencies are in our county. To do broadband, we're going to have to collaborate and partner and fund the private sector. It's as simple as that. And that's what you're going to see in other communities. They're wording it in such a fashion where they're going to be working with A T and T, Comcast, Windstream, all those different providers. To get either first mile or last mile improvements. But I will take this opportunity, I forgot a few things earlier, stormwater is eligible. So we could look into the eligibility of developing a stormwater utility plan, which has. Later revenue implications to the city to offset existing costs. And Office three sixty-five improvement is an eligible expense, because it falls underneath the cybersecurity eligible expense category. And the existing fiber improvements, at a minimum, the connection from the water tower to the county complex would be an eligible expense. But maybe the upgrade and putting in additional sixteen strands into the entire city loop. Forgot about those earlier, sorry.
He did mention it though in our earlier discussions, so he didn't forget about it then, just.
So now we all know Jonathan's list, I'm just kidding.
Some part of it. Any, any other questions from the audience? One wants, going twice. Commission, anything else?
I just want to thank all those involved who helped me make this, put the presentation together. It was a great presentation and it's comprehensive enough for us to understand. And they went through, I guess, and narrowed a lot of things down. You know, was a, a million miles wide and an inch deep. So they brought it in a little bit closer so we can understand it a lot better. So I certainly appreciate that.
Did you say a million miles wide?
Just one more question from a mayor. When are the first part of the funds to be released?
So I did contact the league as well as Department of Emergency Management. They anticipate us receiving our first part of the funding in one to two weeks after we've signed an agreement and sent it back, which we have.
So other communities, some of the local communities, for example, once the agreement was signed, they literally got them in like a week. So, and they'll sit there until we devise the plan.
You're going to put those in some sort of separate line item?
It will be in a separate fund, yes. I met with my staff to discuss how we would account for them. Of course, ours is going to tie back to reporting, but it's, it's all been discussed in finance.
And then also, as we pull the rest of those plans in, or if anybody gets plans from somebody else. Let's go ahead and make sure we, we push it out to finance so they can be distributed to the rest of the commission. Any other questions or comments? As it relate to support public health expenditures. And I asked one time before, when first talked about this, these funds. Did we see, could we actually fund the radios that's needed for fire department and police department? Have we confirmed that in? Could we use those funds for that, as far as going on infrastructure? When I, I look here, was a support of public health expenditures, so.
So communications is listed under there. That was actually one of the expenses that I contacted the league specifically and asked. Could we purchase eight hundred megahertz radios for communications? And they replied and said they cannot give an opinion if something is or is not eligible. So to be completely honest, I'm not sure. That's something that I would have to turn over to the city attorney to see what the legal opinion is.
Can we look into that? Because that's a big expenditure, you know it's needed.
Mr. Holmes just talked about that two seconds ago, when he was talking about the five hundred and twelve thousand dollar. Because the county has actually looked at the same thing. And so that's what he was talking about just previously.
Right.
Mr. Shank and I talked about this early, so.
Can't hear you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shank and I discussed this earlier, so yes, we will be digging through the weeds and figuring this out.
If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you for a great presentation. And we will continue to fill in the blanks as we go.
No, no.
Lots of good things happening in Tallahassee these days.
I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is our City of Placa, September ninth, 2021. Meeting and at this time we'll have our, is Pastor Mobber on the line? We'll have our invocation and our pledge. I'm gonna ask Jeremy Ray if you come forward and lead us with the invocation of the pledge at this time. Cut the mic off. Yeah, that's just good. Now just let it go when the light, the blue light comes up.
Let's pray, Father, we thank you, God. God for the opportunity together, God, and we just thank you, God, for, God, Placa. God and what's going on here, God, and the great things that are happening, God, we ask you to be, be with this meeting, God, that it be prosperous, God, that we bring glory to you, God, be with each, uh, each person here tonight, God. God be glorified, we thank you in Christ's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Broke off, please.
Mayor Toney.
Here.
Commissioner Tammy McCallis.
Here.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Barnes.
Present.
Our president and confessor, Mr. May.
Thank you. Next up is approval of minutes from our August twenty-sixth workshop and meeting.
Motion set minutes is written.
Thanks. So much so, in four and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving into public recognitions and presentations, we have a proclamation for Patriot Day, September eleventh, twenty twenty-one. In remembrance of the victims of the first and the first responders lost during September eleventh, two thousand and one's tragedy. Take your time.
Whereas in September eleven, two thousand and one, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack in U.S. or in the nation's history with courage and bravery. And whereas the lives of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven innocent victims were mercilessly cut short by terrorists driven by hatred and discretion. And whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of devotion and unity and carried out countless acts of kindness. And whereas September eleventh is a day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those united in response to the great tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas in October twenty-fifth, two thousand and one, the United States Congress passed joint resolution seventy-one by a vote of four hundred and seven to zero, directing the president to designate September the eleventh of each year as Patriot Day. And whereas September eleventh is observed and recognized as an annual national day of service and remembrance. And whereas September eleventh and on the days leading up to and following this day, citizens have the opportunity to participate in activities that honor and live in victims and heroes by joining together. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, mayor of the city of Placa, together with the members of the Placa City Commission, do hereby recognize September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one as Patriot Day in the city of Placa. And we encourage local government officials and leaders of civic, social, and educational organizations and citizens to reflect on the importance of active citizenship and recognize the enduring strength of our constitution and reaffirm our commitment to the and recognize the enduring strength of our constitution and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of citizens in this great nation. And witness where I appear on to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Palatka this ninth day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty one.
So move.
Second.
This is a motion on forward a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously.
Ma'am, I got one thing here.
Yes, sir.
You had, um, the roll call for August twenty six. Um, I was, I was present.
This for this proclamation for sure.
Okay.
So again, let's go ahead and give a round of applause for individuals.
Are we presenting?
Yes. Please come forward and accept this proclamation. On behalf of first responders. It's, um. I think it's, it's, it's amazing when we look back at September eleven, two thousand and one, twenty years later. It, it seems like it was just yesterday that our country was in a very, um, unknown place where everybody was on, on edge and, you know, twenty years later, we find ourselves remembering, um, a part of history that many of us um, will never forget just because of the impacts that it had worldwide. And when we look at some of the things that are going on in Afghanistan today. Uh, we look at what's happening around the world and the responses that take place, we've got to make sure that we always pay homage to the individuals who lost their lives on that day, who sacrificed and to the lives that will forever be changed. And so we'll make sure that we never forget. And so, um, as we have our celebrations of for in remembrance of nine eleven, we encourage everybody to participate in whatever capacity you can, whether that's a moment of silence or it's coming out to the county's annual celebration of life, of liberty. And, um, we just, we just encourage everybody to be there twenty years later. It still has the same effect. And so we just encourage everybody to be present. Next up is our proclamation for Constitution Week, September seventeenth through twenty third. William Bartram chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Please come forward, ladies at this time. And.
Are we gonna finish the, uh, correction of the minutes?
You can just slide across the front. And so whoever's going to present, once we present the proclamation, we can go from there. Just before we do that, um, we'll just make a notation of the script there, um, in the minute so that that will be corrected to show that the attendance is proper. So the proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas in May of seventeen eighty seven, delegates gathered in the Pennsylvania State House to chart a new course for our emerging country, meeting in a time of economic hardship and passionate debate. But with the understanding that while controversy is a hallmark of democracy, the force of tension and uncertainty pale in comparison to the strength of our common ideals. And whereas in a document that has endured for more than two and a quarter centuries, the framers put forth their vision for a more perfect union and called it the Constitution of the United States of America. Whereas the Constitution was signed on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty seven, and after an extended period of national conversation and with the promise of a bill of rights, it became the supreme law of the land. Since that time, America's Constitution has inspired nations to abandon control of their own destinies and has called multitudes to seek freedom and prosperity on our shores. And whereas as we celebrate the world's longest surviving written charter of government, let us remember that upholding our founding principles requires us to challenge modern injustices while accepting our responsibilities as citizens, our obligations to one another in the future generations, allowing us to move forward, knowing that in the face of impossible odds, those who love their country can change it. And whereas Constitution Week designated by a joint resolution of Congress on September seventeenth through twenty third of each year was initiated by the Daughters of the American Revolution in nineteen fifty five and signed into law in nineteen fifty six by President Dwight D. Eisenhower, becoming public law number nine fifteen of the United States of America. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, mayor of the city of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby recognize and proclaim September the seventeenth through September twenty third, two thousand and twenty one as Constitution Week in the city of Palatka. We encourage local government officials and leaders of civic, social, and educational organizations to conduct ceremonies and programs that bring together members to reflect on the importance of active citizenship, recognize the enduring strength of our constitution, and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of citizens in this great nation. And witness where I appear in to cause my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palatka, Florida, this ninth day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty one.
So.
Second. So motion, my question for McCaskill, second, my commissioner, Bore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. I've officially photobomb you and just congratulations. You have a spokesperson for today? You wanna use the, you wanna use the mic? So just make sure the blue light's on for us.
We want to thank Mayor Hill and, and the commissioners of the city of Palatka for this. We, as daughters of the American Revolution, this is a big part of who we are, patriotism and historic preservation and, and education. As part of this week on September seventeenth at four o'clock, Daughters of the American Revolution and any interested parties across America will ring the bells, uh, whether they stand in place at home or gather together in ceremonies. We're gonna have one here in Palatka on the steps of the First Presbyterian Church and September seventeenth gathering at three thirty with ringing the bells at four. So we invite all of you to come and to participate in that if you would like.
Okay.
And Julie has a sign.
We'd like to present this sign to the city, uh, to place at a prominent place where people will see that Constitution Week is being celebrated. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. And we will accept it graciously. And again, thank you for all the work that you do. And I and I, it works. And I often, and I often remind everyone when they come in. Thirty-one short years ago, had an opportunity to be a scholarship recipient from this chapter, um, with the DAR scholarship. And so again, we thank the Daughters for all that you do. And we're looking forward to Constitution Week. So again, let's give them a round of applause. Next up, Recovery Month, the AMI Project, September two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas mental health and substance abuse disorders affect affect all communities nationwide with commitment and support, those impacted can embark on a journey of improved health and overall wellness. And whereas the focus of National Recovery Month this September is to celebrate all people that make the journey of recovery possible by embracing the twenty twenty one theme, recoveries for everyone, every person, every family, every community. And whereas Recovery Month spreads the message that people can undo recover every day. And whereas the impact of mental health and substance abuse disorders is apparent in our local community, through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance use disorders. And whereas Recovery Month encourages people in need of recovery services to seek help in managing the fact of mental health and substance abuse disorders to achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas Recovery Month observance works to improve the lives of those affected by mental health and substance abuse disorders by raising awareness and educating our community about the effects service, effective services that are available. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, mayor of the city of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty one in the city of Palatka as National Recovery Month and call upon our community to observe this month with compelling programs and events that support this year's observance, the thirty-second anniversary of Recovery Month. And witness where I appear in to cause my hand to be affixed in the seal of Palatka this ninth day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty one.
So move. Second. There's more on forward a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause for Recovery Month. Hey, who's gonna take the podium for me? Bomb again. Sophie Kim, will you introduce everybody with you today?
This is, um, my name is Jeremy Ray, this is my wife, Melissa Ray. I have Pastor Karen Taylor, my cousin, Josh Rose. My wife.
Hi, everyone. On behalf of me and my project and every person that's in recovery and, um, our great community of Putnam County, I want to thank you, um, for raising this awareness and helping us to remove the stigma associated with substance use disorder, which then enables people to feel more comfortable reaching out for help. Um, and then doing this, this is our actually fourth, um, annual Embrace the Crisis Rally. This is an event that we started to help raise awareness to the crisis that we're facing here in Putnam County. Um, and so the Recovery Month event is a national, um, theme that we have, that recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. And we're learning more and more that it's all about community involvement when recovery takes place. Crisis intervention is great, treatment is great. But the life that is lived afterwards every day for the rest of the individual's life is where recovery really takes place and the community sports support really enables that to take action. Um, and so September eighteenth, from two AM to two PM at Life Church here in Palatka, we're gonna have our fourth annual, annual event. And we're just gonna help raise awareness. Um, we're gonna have professionals in our community come and share what they're doing. Um, and I really do see this moving forward. This is, um, recovery is happening here and we're very excited about it. It's no longer just a thought. Um, it's no longer, it's actually happening, it's taking action. And so we're grateful for that.
Thank you guys for, for all that you do in this community, for making sure that you stay mission driven and that you put people first. And so we appreciate that. Our thoughts and prayers go out to you and your family at this time as well. And we just appreciate everything that you do in this community. Uh, and, and these are the purposes that we continue to want to support as a city and as a community because it only takes a second for one of us to be standing in the same seat. And I think that it's the point that we forget it, that we find ourselves needing the help the most. And so again, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up is the occupation of Palatka Civil War event, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, Robert Maltz.
Okay. Members of the council, um, when I spoke to you about this a couple of years ago, I was in my stivvies, but I thought I'd spice things up a little bit by appearing in character this time. This is a, a Union Navy, uh, Steeman's outfit.
I thought it was your normal dress.
So, yeah, I want to give you just a quick preview of, uh, this year's occupation of Palatka event. Um, I'm the main coordinator, mainly with the reenactors, get the events set up. Uh, your special events committee has, has allowed us to, to, you know, try again this year with, uh, lots of safeguards in place, largely gonna be outside. Thank you. Yeah. So we're actually duplicating a little slice of history here in, um, Palatka and Putnam County, uh, the years eighteen sixty-four. And it was after the Union defeat at the Battle of Olusty, um, that, um, the Union Army retreated back to Jacksonville. Then they were afraid that that big Confederate army was gonna go on the offensive, so they reinforced their position in Jacksonville and sent reinforcements to Fernandina and St. Augustine, and they sent Barton's New York Brigade down here to Palatka to occupy the town. Next slide. So this event is what we call a living history. It's not per se a reenactment. We're not reenacting any, any, uh, any kind of a, kind of a battle. I think it's, it's really unique among, uh, the, um, Civil War events in Florida because it's, we're not about a battlefield or a fort or a battle. It's about this town and, and what happened, the Union force moving in. So this, uh, living history event began in two thousand and eleven with some local folks in the, uh, Putnam County Historical Society, along with, uh, with help from, from your folks. Uh, we hold it at the Bronson Mulholland House, which was kind of the centerpiece of the occupation. Colonel Barton and his staff took up residence there in, uh, in the house and the soldiers camped, uh, in the area around, not counting last year. This will be our tenth year of this event. Next slide. So we feature a variety of military units, mainly Union, since it was a Union, um, uh, event. But, uh, we do have Keith Cole, who talks a little bit about Confederate activity in the area. Uh, we emphasize both Army and, and Navy, you know, go Navy, uh, cause there were the Union gunboats on the, uh, on the St. John's River. And they often worked closely with the Army in this northeast Florida area. Next slide. Uh, and then civilians, you know, because in a sense, the town is the centerpiece, the civilian experience is a real big part of our living history event, not just the military and the weapons and the battle and all that kind of stuff. So we have a number of groups that specialize in, um, civilian portrayals. And, and we'll have a lot of them back this year. Next slide. Okay, um, it's a two-day event, uh, Friday, uh, September twenty fourth and Saturday, September twenty fifth. Friday is usually our school day, and I'm still working with the school system. Uh, they are hoping to send us some, uh, fourth graders. This is kind of the fourth grade field trip in, uh, in Putnam County. As you know, they're having transportation and bus issues, so they might only be able to send us some of the students from the in-town schools, you know, not Melrose or Oakwill or anything like that, but, uh, we'll, we'll take them. And, uh, and then of course also the charter and, and homeschool groups. The last few years, we had the event, two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, we had over six hundred students come through, so very educational event. And then Saturday is kind of our general, uh, open to the public day, uh, where folks can come very relaxed, uh, spend lots of time to talk to the, to the reenactors, the living historians. This year, um, we're gonna do something that we did with the, um, Putnam County Historical Society at their July meeting. Uh, some of us, mainly folks with the, um, historic impressionists of, of Florida and St. Augustine, are gonna portray some actual individuals who are in the area, the Sanchez, Twisters, former Governor Mosley, uh, who lived outside of town. And then myself and, um, Connie Sowers are gonna, uh, reenact the, um, exchange between Mary Boyd and a Union gunboat commander who was gonna shell the town, and she talked him out of it. So we'll be kind of be doing that on the hour to different groups, um, kind of, kind of going through. And then at two PM that, that day, it's kind of not connected with the event, but they, uh, wanted to make it the same day. The, um, historic impressionists of Florida are doing a, a ladies tea at St. Mark's Church, uh, hosting that. Next slide, okay. So, uh, September twenty fourth and twenty fifth, two weeks from, from tomorrow is our event. It is the hundred and fifty-seventh anniversary of the actual historical event. And again, the, uh, tenth year of, uh, of this, this living history, this, um, uh, reportrayal of the event. And I think last slide. Just want to say thanks, a big player here that, that supports me a lot is the, uh, Historical Society. Your staff is, is always very helpful and the Van Rensburgs have, have always been big, uh, supporters of our event. And so with that, uh, be happy to answer any, any questions.
Any questions? Seeing that, just thank you again for the great job that you do with the occupation and, and for the work that you do on this program, especially with our young people.
Yeah.
So again, let's give them a round of applause.
Yes, sir.
Since we still have COVID going, um, as people use the podium or mic, I think we'll maybe get that sanitized each use, maybe, so. Well, yeah. Yeah, we just need.
Our wife said the podium.
Yeah, we just need to, every, for every time. No, just spray the phone, spray that microphone. She, she just accounted for that.
It's amazing how, it's amazing how sanitation always causes somebody to start coughing, usually me. Great job there, Ms. Shane. Next up, Northeast Florida COVID-19 Economic Recovery Plan, both the Florida Regional Council. How you doing, sir?
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for having me. And these proclamations are a tough act to follow. I'm going to bore you a little bit, so I apologize in advance. So, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Sean Wohoff, and I serve as the Resiliency Coordinator for the Northeast Florida Regional Council. And so in conjunction with the workshop that was recently facilitated this, this day, the focus of my presentation is on the Northeast Florida COVID-19 Economic Recovery Plan that was developed by the Regional Council. Additionally, this presentation will also address specific components of the American Rescue Plan Act as you all begin to have those discussions. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them at the end. If we can go to the next slide, please. So on an introductory note, the Northeast Florida Regional Council is one of 10 regional planning councils in the state of Florida. The Northeast Florida region serves seven counties and 25 municipalities. The city of Palatka and Putnam County are both member governments of the Regional Council with representation. The Regional Council also has diverse program areas ranging from planning and public policy to emergency preparedness, healthcare preparedness, economic development, and what I'm here to talk about, the issue of resilience. And so if we go forward to the next slide, so traditionally in Florida, over the past decade, resilience has referred to flooding issues and other challenges related to sea level rise and climate change. But in the context of this presentation, I'm referring to economic resilience. And so this is something that we've been considering over the past year and a half with the COVID-19 pandemic. And so when I utilize the term economic resilience, really referring to the abilities of local communities and economies to bounce back to normal after losing function. And so obviously, this entire country lost function during the pandemic, and so we're trying to craft a economic recovery strategy moving forward. And according to best practices from all across the country and what we've identified at the Regional Council, equity really is an important driving factor of all of these discussions because of the impacts that marginalized populations experience. Moving forward into the next slide, so going back all the way to the beginning of the pandemic, the Regional Council shifted its resources to respond to economic impacts on the ground. One of the first products that we produced was a Small Business Resource Guide that provided small business owners with real-time information about grant funding and emergency assistance that was available. And so this was a critical document that really gave us a better understanding of what was going on. Additionally, some of you might have heard about REMI Economic Forecasting Software. It's traditionally used for economic development and projects. We utilized REMI to monitor economic impacts across different industries and sectors during the pandemic and produce three separate studies. Some of the data in there might be useful as you start, you know, writing grant applications or making ARPA decisions, because it'll show you specific impacts that were incurred across specific industries. Moving forward into the next slide, and so this is really what I'm here to talk about, and I apologize, I don't know why this, the screen is not working, or this slide. So going back to August 2020, about a year ago, the Regional Council received a federal grant through the CARES Act at the national level. And so this grant was awarded through the Economic Development Administration and was charged us with responding to economic impacts caused by the pandemic. We utilized this money to establish a 20-member policy body called the Economic Resilience Task Force with representation of leaders from all across the seven-county region. For Putnam County in Palatka, we had Commissioner Rolls from the Putnam B O C C serve as a task force member. And then Mr. Jonathan Griffith from the City of Palatka was a member of the task force and continues to serve on our body. And so moving forward, at the beginning of the work of the task force, Regional Council staff produced a 100-page briefing guide that provides detailed data and information about pre- and post-pandemic impacts. So if we go to the next slide, there are specific chapters in this document related to Putnam County. Again, this might be useful information. I know that broadband was a topic area that was discussed earlier. Part of this document outlines broadband gaps across Northeast Florida in a GIS format, so there might be some useful data in there. And so moving forward into the remainder of this presentation, what I'm here really to talk about is the Northeast Florida Recovery Plan. And so each of you have a copy in front of you. It's a 40-page succinct document. And so the purpose of this plan is to articulate a unified and clear vision for Northeast Florida in determining what might be assistance or what might be helpful to local governments as you begin to have these ARPA spending decisions. There are three priority areas in here: infrastructure, support and relief for small businesses, and equity, and I'm going to touch on those in a second. On the next slide, these two pictures highlight that more than two dozen organizations from across Northeast Florida participated in this process. We had a really amazing support system in place for, for conducting this work. And here are all of the members of the task force who participated in this process. And so very briefly, in looking at what you all talked about between four to five today, just want to touch on a few components of the recovery plan as it relates to needs and priorities in Palatka. So if we go to the next slide, we can skip this one. So in terms of infrastructure priorities, some of the main concerns that were identified by the task force relate to broadband, modernizing rural infrastructure, creating best-in-class infrastructure investment, and also addressing legacy infrastructure challenges, especially in places like Jacksonville. Now, in terms of broadband, something that I thought was really interesting and you all might be interested in is a pilot program that the TPO conducted in the east side neighborhood of Jacksonville. And so they, through a public-private partnership, built a Wi-Fi system to provide public Wi-Fi access for free across a nine-mile radius. And so this might be something of interest to Palatka, especially in your downtown area. With the $5 million that you're about to receive, you might not be able to address all of the city's concerns, but in the downtown area, that might be one solution on the table. Moving forward into support and relief for small businesses, the task force recognized that there's a lot of assistance providers all across Northeast Florida, but they're heavily concentrated in places like Jacksonville. And so one example, Dr. Carlton Robinson from the Jacksonville Chamber of Commerce, he gave a presentation to the task force that talked about the entrepreneurship program that the Jacksonville has. And so every year, they build a cohort of aspiring business owners or people trying to get their businesses off the ground, and they help them with mentoring, coaching, et cetera. And so those services are available to individuals or business owners in Palatka and Putnam County, and we hope to connect some of those dots through partnerships. Additionally, we identified a lot of best practices such as online crowdsourcing. So if a business wants to get off the ground here in Palatka, there are mechanisms such as GoFundMe and other online websites to raise venture capital through community support. And finally, on the last priority area of equity, some of the issues that, one more slide back, please. Thank you. Some of the issue areas that were looked at included mental health and substance abuse, and most importantly, affordable housing in terms of what's really been a priority across Northeast Florida. And so I recognize during your workshop that affordable housing came up. The Florida Housing Coalition addressed the task force last month and provided a very comprehensive presentation on opportunities to address affordable housing within the American Rescue Plan Act. I'm going to forward that presentation to you after this evening. But we're more than interested in having the Florida Housing Coalition address you all if you were interested, so I think that would be valuable.
Definitely.
All right, and so there's a few more components before I close out this presentation, but most of this you already reviewed earlier today. So if we go to the next slide, so it was mentioned, you know, there's a lot of resources out there and a lot of guidance. It's kind of difficult to figure out what's most useful, it's kind of information overload right now. But the Institute of County Government for Florida released an American Rescue Plan Resource Center. This has been our go-to guidance and resource for understanding ARPA. So on the next page, or next slide, you all obviously know what you're about to receive, over $5 million. Northeast Florida, as a seven-county region, is anticipated to receive more than $500 million. And so this really signifies the importance of taking a regional approach to understanding these issues and what's important to local communities. This is also a once-in-a-generation opportunity to utilize federal spending to advance local priorities. So I'm very impressed by how the city of Palatka has been proactive in having these discussions. And so just a few more slides, you already went over this, so I don't need to address that. And so one of the other things that you mentioned earlier, what is everyone else doing? You know, what's going on in other communities? So Flagler County was alluded to. I know that St. John's County also recently released a survey for residents and business owners to respond to. Something we're encouraging municipalities and counties to look at is the Nassau County Prosperity Plan. And so how Nassau County is explaining it, the CARES Act was really focused on real-time economic stabilization. With ARPA, on the other hand, recognizing that it has to be obligated by 2024, spent by 2026, this is more of a long-term opportunity. Nassau County is looking at this as a way to build prosperity moving into the future, see a long-term return on investment, and put people first in their decisions. And so this is a really inspirational document, a best practice, if you'll say. And I encourage you to check this out. We'll provide a link as well after this presentation. And so there's two more slides, and then we'll open it up for questions. Beyond the local government allocations that are coming your way and all across Northeast Florida, the Economic Development Administration, Department of Commerce, announced $3 billion in additional ARPA funding opportunities that they will be administering. These are focused on economic development, travel, tourism, outdoor recreation. I know that that's been a priority in Palatka in recent years. And so we have a Economic Development Manager at the Regional Council who can assist staff with identifying opportunities, connecting with our federal liaison, and seeing what types of projects you might be able to get funded through this $3 billion pot of money. So I have one more slide, and then we'll be done. So where I'd like to leave this, we're encouraging local governments, including the city of Palatka, to consider the recovery plan that's in front of you as you all begin to start having these discussions. There's a lot of useful ideas in here, not only from Northeast Florida, but other parts of the country on case studies. Additionally, if you need assistance as a member government, we can provide you with data and resources to assist you with all of your technical needs. Finally, the Regional Council is the designated Economic Development District for Northeast Florida. It's recognized by the federal government. And so we have direct access through federal channels such as the Economic Development Administration, where we can assist you with identifying eligible projects and focus areas. So with that being said, thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to address you tonight. In addition to my more broad role, I'm the assigned county person, or the assigned staff person for Putnam County. So I'm here almost twice a month, and it's an honor to be here.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioner, staff, anyone? How are these border directors appointed? Who appoint people to your board?
So to the board or the task force?
Both.
Okay, so the, the Regional Council Board of Directors is comprised of two-thirds elected officials from counties and municipalities. I'm not entirely certain on how that selection process works, but I do believe that we've had representation from the city of Palatka in the past.
We still do.
Okay, are you on the board right now?
So I actually, I passed my spot on, Mr. Holmes.
Okay, and I do remember your appointment, and good to see you on the board as well. In terms of the task force, we didn't really have a framework in place for determining how best to approach that, but we utilize some of our existing bodies, such as the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy and a few other groups that we already had in place to identify members. But our priority was having representation from every county and having diverse perspectives. And so Jonathan Griffith really added a lot of value to our process. I hope that answers the question.
You did. I just, any other, any other questions? I, I definitely appreciate it. Do you have a card?
Yes, and I can provide that to you.
And so we definitely appreciate the presentation. I think there are a lot of things in there that will be helpful as we move forward. And then I guess, are you gonna, and I guess we'll reach out to you in the coming days to really talk about from a more detail-oriented position as to how we can move forward with the plan that we discussed earlier, as well as what other opportunities exist with EDA and other agencies who have funding in place for under the ARPA?
Can you get one of those, so we can get?
Yeah, absolutely. Once I'm done with here, I'll pass this along.
So.
Yeah, we can absolutely follow up, and just want to mention as well that the Regional Council is supporting the city of Palatka in a competitive Florida grant right now that was recently awarded. So in the coming months, we're going to be working on a visioning process with you all, and we're looking forward to that, so there might be some good synergy right now.
Right, and so we, we've talked extensively about the strategic planning process and what we can do with that grant as we move forward and really being able to provide a blueprint and direction in the future. So we definitely appreciate everything and the partnership with Regional Council.
All right, thank you for having me, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. No actual be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here who wishes to speak during public comment, there are yellow speakers cards in the corner that you can fill out for your public comment. You can also dial 386-329-0100, extension zero, if you have any further comment. So at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seen no one. Close public comment.
I'd like to make a correction on the amended public comment, but not a public comment, it's just amended on the minutes that we have here reflected.
What?
On the meeting that we, we voted on this, August 26th meeting.
For attendance?
Yeah.
We've already made the notation. I did it when you said it first time.
Okay.
So we already notated what the attendance was, and they got it corrected.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Gotcha. I read your mind once you said it.
That makes me feel good, I tell you.
Moving on, the numbered, number five on our agenda, the consent agenda, we got items A through I on the agenda. Are there any items on the agenda that you wish to have removed at this time?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the?
Speak up, I'll hold your peace.
We're on five, we're on five.
Yeah.
You have a night, we're, we're on the consent agenda, item number five. Is there anything you wish to have removed?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Bourne, there's a second by Commissioner Campbell. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions, call. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item number six of the agenda discussion, in direction of replacement of roof and sprinkler system at the north side, Neighborhood Facility Center, formerly Robert H. Jenkins Gymnasium. Ms. Cutright and Mr. Holmes, who's doing this? Mr. Holmes, you want to take it? He looked reluctant.
Well, with Ms. Cutright's input, it's, and the process of us looking at the Jenkins Gym, and I'm probably not calling it by the correct name at this point, but what will be the Central Academy Neighborhood Facility Center, if that's the name to be given to it. We've noted a number of issues. A most immediate one has to do with a pretty significant leak that had opened up. In the course of looking at that leak, had occasion to reexamine the overall condition of the roof. And the bottom line is that we had to patch the leak because it was causing additional damage to the interior of the structure and making the structure more, less usable than it otherwise was. That's at a cost of about $5,000 roughly, a little between four and five. We anticipate that replacing the roof is going to be in excess of $80,000. We can't give you a specific amount because obviously that would have to be the subject of an RFP. But the roof is going to need attention, as will the issue of a air conditioners, several of which are located on the roof, and I think Mr. Cutright has had those evaluated. And apparently, it appears that we're in a position to either try to replace six air conditioning units. It appears that we're in a position to either try to replace six air conditioning units. Piece some units together or go with four new units that would be more energy saving. And in the long run, reduce our. Our electrical bills and consumptions at the facility. That's not all the air conditioners there, but these would be the air conditioners that service the gym itself. We think that's cost is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000, round figures. And then we've got the sprinkler system, which we don't have a firm number on, but. Again, the numbers that I've seen have centered somewhere in the $100,000 range and maybe a little bit less, maybe a little bit more. But, but the direction that we're seeking is this. We can try to piecemeal and like perform the roof. Just a case that we've just authorized. But as if it's our desire to put this center in operation and as full of function as we can, as quickly as we can. It's our suggestion that we go ahead and try to address the issues in an overall fashion so that. As we get tenants in there and as we try to use the facility, we don't have repeated interruptions. We don't have problems with leakage or problems with lack of HVAC. Or, and of course, the sprinkler system is going to be a code requirement that we don't have a lot of choice about. So I guess what we're asking for is. Direction from the commission, we can, we can simply patch the roof. See how long the remainder of the roof lasts and try to, try to do what we can to, to move forward. We will probably be required to do something with the air conditioning units. We can. We may have a lesser, less expensive option than the replacement, but. If we do, that less expensive option is going to involve trying to salvage. Some of the old air conditioning units, as I understand it, and make good units out of them. And you know, when you do that. You're, you're, you're probably going to have repeated breakdowns and interruptions in service. And then of course, the sprinkler system, if we're going to use it for, for any, for the multi-purposes that y'all have indicated. That's something that's going to have to be put in sooner rather than later. So I guess. Because of the amount of money we're talking about, we just wanted to come to the commission and ask for your direction. Are you okay with us moving forward? To try to fix these items in a fashion so that it's a more permanent fix? Or do you want to try to, you know, ration the money, the expenditures in a, in a, in a fashion so that we don't spend as much money upfront? But there's a trade-off both ways. And so we, we, we're looking for guidance.
I'll let the commission start this up before I say anything.
The first thing I would like to ask, what's our financial standpoint on this? I mean, definitely we want to do what's best. So initiation of this at the start of this, so we don't have to come back and keep revisiting it. But my question would be, what's our financial standpoint?
We set $190,000 aside from this budget year for this project already. So the, what he's talking about, we've already, what Mr. Holmes just talked about, we've already set the money aside. So as it relates to that, just for this fiscal year, that's not counting what we, any plans for the rest of the time.
Okay, so if we're financially stable to do it, I mean, I don't think that would be a question of what, what we need to do, what, you know. What's best for us to do to go ahead if we can move forward with it.
Any, Ms. Shank, you want to add anything to that? And then we'll go to the next commissioner?
Yeah, as far as what has been spent currently this fiscal year, we can give you an exact figure on that. Cause there are some purchase orders and end of year expenses coming through. On October 1st, there is $190,000 budgeted in capital and that was to attribute. An estimated 90,000 for the roof and $100,000 for a sprinkler system. So our capital that we had budgeted for next year does not include the ACs.
We weren't aware of the AC until they broke. And then when they broke and they were evaluated, and Eddie can answer questions, Mr. Carleton. Mr. Cutwright can answer questions if you'd like, but I think I summarized what he told me today.
Any other question? Commissioner Jones, if you'd like some.
I agree with Commissioner McCaskill. We, we, that building is ours now. And we should go ahead and take care of it, especially the roof. So when we get tenants in there, they can pay fair market rents and we won't have that issue going on. As far as the gymnasium and the air conditioner. That's one component that is not going to be utilized as an office. So. I think that we, if we have the money, let's go ahead and get it done. But can that? I was in there with you, so I know it's hot in the gym. But my thing is, as far as priority, getting it up where we could actually have tenants in there is a major priority over. The gymnasium right now, because you could actually utilize gym in a winter month without air conditioning. Real tough men and women can. But, yeah, it works, but I understand we, in the future, we.
Actually, since the camp this summer, the four units that were working went out. So we had Arctic after this morning, or yesterday morning, so that's the reason why. We're talking about the AC units now. When we was originally starting this, the AC was fine, but over the last couple of months since all that, the AC.
But that's just in the gymnasium, right?
The surrounding AC units and the offices and the community service rooms working fine.
And, and in addition to that, maybe. With the ARPA, ARPA funds, we could find some creative ways to get funding over there. Due to the fact, we start talking about programs that we're going to put in there, is going to deal with children, underprivileged or at-risk kids. That should qualify under that umbrella. I'm quite sure that we could do that because like Mary Hill said, we have, I have reached out. To other comrades and they've done something similar in the neighborhood. So. I say let's do the roof and then. Let's see what we could do about those air conditioners. But since we got the money budgeted, I'm all for putting it all in and.
We got roof and sprinkler.
We got 190. So what, well, for the sprinkler, well, we had the priority of going to be the roof and the sprinkler and, and maybe the air conditioner.
But to add to that, the, the $50 was to replace most, $50,000 of us to replace most of all of them, make them new. The Arctic Air gave us several options. We could, like, like Mr. Holmes said, we could piecemeal without a pause and make four functional ones. Or we can get two bigger, four bigger units and take away the sticks and that should operate.
The units are old. What'd you tell me, 19?
1998.
1998 units. So when you start piecemealing, all you're doing is, in my honest.
Putting advantage on the first one, so, oh yeah, I understand that.
We could get away with the sticks. We can, we can do away with sticks and then we can function with four. In the, in the, on the long term, it's going to save us more money. On the front end, it might cost us a couple more dollars, but the bigger units and the more efficient units will save us that way.
Depending on how much money we have left in this fiscal year, we could roll it forward to help pay for that. Because we, we did have a budget this fiscal year that we kind of put in place with estimates. So depending on where we're at, we can bring that figure to you.
I don't know where Jonathan is, but he's sending me texts from a field and. His, if you don't mind, he said that he believes USDA. He believes USDA would, would fund or might fund the improvements under a community facilities grant. And we could also seek additional hardening funding from DEO. That might help pay for the sprinkler. So there he is.
Any other comment from the commission?
I mean, I'll just go ahead and say, there's no sense in piecemealing it if you're going to. Do the repairs. Some things are, like the sprinkler system. And everything else is, is important and you got ACs from 1990, so. Just go ahead and make it right one time. We have all the funds that we could tap into. With maybe even some of the ARPA stuff, so. It meets some of the, a lot of those criteria. So just do it once. Do it, do it right the first time.
I'm in total agreement as well with making it right now. It may cost us upfront, but it's definitely going to be beneficial to us. In the long run, we want to get that facility back to use as quickly as possible. So I don't want to piecemeal. Because when you piecemeal, you, you essentially work yourself out of more money in the long run. So I definitely would like for us to get it up and running as quick as possible, the best way as possible, and that's not by piecemealing it.
What a record. I didn't say piecemeal it. I said, I said, until we tackle that.
So.
My statement is not to piecemeal it. I'm not referring to your statement.
No, no, I just wanted to be.
That was my statement.
Caught it right.
My statement is not to piecemeal it in any way, shape or form. That's my statement.
Nick, Will Jones is fourth, taking care of the building, getting it right, right now. Okay, thank you.
Just so you know, he wasn't going to write about this. So I, I guess in closing on the comments, I think when we look at this building as a whole. The reality is, we anticipated some expenses. Our real number, probably looking at this thing initially, was we knew we were going to be somewhere around a quarter million as it related to everything to get it up to snuff. We knew at some point our condition would be addressed. We thought there'd be a phased approach to getting there. The reality of it is this, the gym has to be done. We've already set some resources aside. We know that ARPA funds are going to allow us to have some budgetary. Improvements over time. And also, in a perfect world, if we're able to get the rest of the school and use it for the facility needs that we have. There's going to be some debt service that comes with that, which will allow us to do further improvements and get the entire facility to where it needs to be. So from a financial standpoint. The prospects of the Jenkins, the whole Jenkins campus creates a great opportunity for us. From a financial side, and I think it puts us in a better position to serve the community and everything else. So it makes all the sense that we're to do just what you guys are saying, which is go ahead and spend the money now. That facility by itself. At the end of the day, you think about it, it's a $5.5 million facility at its lowest point. And if we got to spend a few hundred thousand to get a five and a half million dollar facility up to today's standards, it's worth it for us to do it. Because at the end of the day, it's going to serve more people than any facility that we have in this community right now.
I also would like to add, counsel, they have a gymnasium floor that I walked on with the tour of Mr. Cutwright. That needs attention as well. So when we talking about going in and just have a one-shot deal. I think we need to address that as well. And I think you have something that works already.
Yes.
If you have to bring that back to us or not.
It was allocated in the budget when we first started this. We have money set aside for flooring, the petition is in the multipurpose room to kind of get that done. Those, those. Repairs and renovations is ironed into this year budget that we would set aside. The major thing came about when we had the roof and then we also.
So we appreciate that. I mean, I think. We all agree that, you know what they say about a restaurant, its first week determines what happens to it. Make a good first impression, people. Same approach we look at from Jenkins. If we can get it in there, get it right, then we think that it'll be. It'll help with the success of it. So we'll, we'll move forward on that basis then. We'll do the RFP on the roof and.
Like the mayor said, we're going to, we're going to phase approaches one phase.
All right, moving on, item number seven agenda. Thank you, Mr. Cutwright, Mr. Holmes. Public hearings. Item 7A is our first hearing for trim calendar fiscal year 2021. Welcome all the way up to the front. Pass it over to Ms. Shank. Fiscal year 2021 trim calendar, proposed budget and millet rate for 2021 for a budget year 6.4 mils.
Are you skipping my script?
Excuse me?
Are you skipping the script?
I'm not skipping it. I was getting ready to go to it.
Okay.
Turn our microphone off again, please.
City of Palatka Commissioners convened a public hearing on the City of Palatka's fiscal year 2021-22. Proposed millet rates and tentative budget as required by Florida statutes 129 and 200. And as advertised in the truth in millet notices, if anyone in our audience is here for the purposes of contesting their assessment. A petition for adjustment with the value adjustment board should be filed by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 14th, 2020. As stated in the trim notices, sent first via first-class mail by the city's property appraiser. To every taxpayer on the property value assessment role, county's property appraiser. For those in attendance this evening wishing to address the commission, citizens' comments will be taken following the overview of the tentative budget. By the finance director. The finance director Lawrence Shanks. Will now present an explanation of the proposed and rollback millet rates.
Mayor and commissioners, this evening, we will take a number of actions related to the adoption of the proposed millet rates. And budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. Tonight's hearing is the first of two public hearings required to be held per Florida statutes. Prior to the adoption of the final millet rate and budget by the taxing authority. As such, this is not the final budget hearing and final adoption of the millet rates and budgets will not be considered tonight. At the conclusion of this hearing, a specific date, time and place of the second public hearing for adoption of the final millet rates and budget will be established. Florida statutes require the name of the taxing authority, the millet rate to be levied, the rollback rate and the percentage change over rollback rate be publicly announced. In addition, we also have to report as to why the proposed millet rates differ from the rollback millet rates. Rolled back millet rate is defined as a millet rate which exclusive of new construction, additions to structures, deletions and property added. Due to geographic boundary changes will provide the same ad valorem tax revenue for each taxing authority as was levied during the prior year. The trim process requires that a notice of tax increase be advertised. When the current year proposed aggregate millet rate exceeds the calculated aggregate rollback millet rate. The aggregate rollback millet rate is calculated by dividing the prior year adjusted property tax revenue. By the current year taxable property value and then multiplied by 1,000. The current year taxable value does not include new construction or tax increment, also known as CRA values. For the fiscal year 2022 budget, the aggregate proposed operating millet for the city of Palatka is 6.4000 mils. Which is 17.74% greater than the rollback rate of 5.4356 mils. The increase in property tax revenue is due to maintaining the current millet rates. And it's essential to fund the appropriations needed to operate the general citywide budget. Mayor and commissioners, the total city tentative budget for fiscal year 2021-22. Is $57,247,873. I'm happy to answer any of your questions pertaining to any changes or the budget before you at this time.
Are there any questions from the members of the commission? Seeing none. We'll now open the floor for public comment, public hearing as it relates to our fiscal year 2021 proposed millet rate and tentative budget. I'd now like to invite citizens to comment on the fiscal year 2021-22 proposed millet rate and tentative budget. Please come forward to the podium. If you wish to address the commission, fill out the yellow speaker's card. And they can be found in the back of the room in the corner. Is there anyone here for public comment at this time? Is there anything in the? Is there anything? Is there any callers on the line at this time? Hearing no callers on the line. Think that is no, there will now close public comment.
Mayor and commissioners, the budget document before you, which is the FY22 tentative budget includes the changes that were described. Earlier, any additional adjustments to this budget can be made by motion at this time.
Now I understand a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further comment on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously.
And for the.
Go ahead.
For the record, that was. For resolution number 2021-r-120, which is the tentative military.
Correct. Moving on, item B.
I'm sorry, item B is adoption of the resolution establishing the proposed city of Palatka military. Mayor and commissioners, Florida statutes require the board to adopt proposed millet rates prior to adopting the related budget. As such, before you as resolution number 2021-r-120. A resolution to adopt a tentative millet rates for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. Pursuant to the provisions of chapter 200 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and separability and providing for an effective date. This resolution includes a total general fund millet rate for fiscal year 22, which is 6.4. This resolution includes a total general fund millet rate for fiscal year twenty two, which is six point four zero 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 mils, which is unchanged from fiscal year twenty one.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. That's the resolution number twenty twenty one, R one two zero, adopting tentative millet rate for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. I'll open the floor for public hearing. See no one here for public hearing. We'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to adopts the resolution, adopting fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two tentative budget.
Mayor and commissioners, subsequent to the commission adopting the F Y twenty two proposed millet rates is to adopt the corresponding F Y twenty two tentative budget before you as resolution number twenty twenty one dash R dash one twenty one, which is a resolution to adopt the tentative budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two pursuant to the provisions of chapter two hundred Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and separability and providing for an effective date.
So move.
Is there a second? There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Public hearing. Can you use three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, or you can fill out a yellow speaker's card? Seeing no one here, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item D, establishing and publicly announcing the date, time, and place for the second public hearing to consider the final adoption of the military's end budget.
Mayor and commissioners, the final action requested from the commission this evening is to establish and publicly announce the date, time, and location of the final public hearing to consider adopting the final millet rates and budget as amended. This meeting must be held within twenty days following the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, properly advertised and held after five P M. Staff recommends that the second and final public hearing be scheduled for Thursday, September twenty third, twenty twenty one, at six P M in the same location, the commissioners' chambers.
I entertain a motion.
So move.
So motion on the floor in a second. Public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mayor and commission, the budget-related business for this evening's public hearing is complete. Thank you.
This concludes our first term public hearing. It wasn't, it's more detail.
It's uh, pretty, pretty uh.
So definitely.
I like that format.
Appreciate it. Great job, machine.
Yes. Pretty clear.
Next up is item seven B, public hearing. Orders request for annexation and rezoning of Putnam County Agriculture A G to city of Palaco. Residential multifamily R three on sixteen point nine one acre parcel at six one three one Krill Avenue, just west of Davis Lake Road, case P B twenty one dash twelve, applicant Thomas Morgan, owner L Wayne Garrett, second reading.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, annexing into the corporate city limits of the city of Placa, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as sixty one thirty one Krill Avenue, east eighteen acres of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, ex official records book eight seventy five, page fifteen twenty one, contiguous to the boundaries of the city Placa, Florida, providing for scrivener's errors and providing for an effective date.
So move.
For a second, now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Same rules apply. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioner. As I said, it's sixteen point nine one acres located on the west side of the homes in front of Davis Lake Road, Krill Avenue, which is highway twenty. It says it's gonna be a hundred and forty four market rate apartments. And it's two-story, I believe. My question to you, have we thought about the impact that it would have on our local fire and police services when we're annexing these potential projects like this? Is there an alternative to just have these folks that purchase of land and develop to just have a purchase city water and sewer without being actually fully annexed? Do we have, we explored that because when we talk about growth, we want growth in the city. That's still in the county. There's people that are still in the county, but they're gonna be getting the city services, which we do want that revenue. But we could get the revenue without actually annexing them physically in there, putting a strain on our city fire and rescue. And I see some of the public service employees shaking their head. Have, have we considered that? Because I know I've seen a couple of these uh, come up recently. And this one, because of the number and the density, I wanted to ask that question to the commission. Have we actually considered it?
That's, that's a good point, Commissioner Jones. Um, I, I think we need to do some more exploring as it relates to the impact uh, on our city's budget as well as on our city's personnel being able to service tho- those areas. Again, that was a good point in terms of uh, maybe letting, allowing for the water and sewer service to those areas, but maybe not considering them for full annexation because, again, we're gonna have to police fire. It's gonna have to be able to service those areas. We've, we need to really look at how we bring things into the city. Uh, we're already struggling right now with what we currently have. Everything is kinda chopped up um, as it relates in. So I think we need to take a look, stronger look, and maybe even think about some impact fees.
Really talking about not bringing something to the payroll that's gonna increase funding that comes into the city. So I, I, I just wanna make sure that, um.
You're not gonna recoup all the taxes, you, based on what they contribute, you're not gonna recoup the taxes if they're annexed into the city for the services that you're providing. And the initial thing is the impact fee. So I think we really need to kinda slow down a little bit and work with uh, our finance to understand what the impact to our, why our, our city is in, in the services that we provide. I mean, that's just from my standpoint, so.
Any other comments?
Is, is that something that could be done, uh, finance director? Find out what the financial impact will be, uh, if we're just, if we're getting fees for water and sewer versus the tax base, what it's gonna, how, how would the tax base increase? What that impact would be versus just providing water and sewer? And what will be the impact for our, our fire and rescue and our police? I mean, we never get to see that, so I'm just asking. What do you say?
Um, I mean, as far as water and sewer, that's consumption based, so. That's something that I can definitely look into. I can let you know what I can provide.
That is something that I would like to see going forward. Cause you, you, you know, we, we see this, that's, that is a huge undertaking when you look at that. And then you, then you look around it, that's all county. You know, you got a, that, that sixteen acres right there in the middle of county, probably off Davis Lake Road, go all the way back to Krill, Krill going back to Davis Lake Road. And a hundred and forty four, I know the development and that's gonna be nice for us. I'm just talking about the totality of the impact. And I think that's something that we should consider, you know.
I can speak to the water and sewer questions, or Miss Walsh may wanna speak to the benefit of the density of the development and the impact that has on service. Um, but um, outside the city rate is, uh, I believe one and a half times the inside city rate. However, the city cannot recoup um, the franchise fee from the outside the city customers. So all that additional revenue would stay within the water and sewer fund. You would not see that in the general fund.
Okay.
And also, the other part of it is, we're not talking about a single-family home. We're not talking about a series of single-family homes. We're talking about a development that's probably gonna be in excess of twelve million dollars to the tax rolls um, for the purposes of what's in place. I think the cost associated with the hundred-unit development was over twelve million. You're talking a hundred and forty four units on this project. Looking at applying just six point four mils to what we have in place, not counting what comes from fire assessment, which would deal with what we get from fire services based upon two point four six dollars per thousand dollars of relative value, plus the hundred and thirty dollars per lot that's assessed on the property, which was set up so that the services that are received by them would already have that calculation put in place, not counting the fact that we have a negative deficit as it relates to population within this city based upon the last census count, that we've been stymying as it relates to what we have economically within this community. And we're looking for people to be catalysts to come into the community to a lot better housing. We haven't had new housing on a market rate standpoint here since nineteen eighty five. All of those factors alone by itself said this is the perfect time for us to look at it. If this commission wants to have a conversation about impact fees, it's about time that we have it, but I don't think we have it at the hands of turner way developers at a time when we're finally starting to realize some growth in this community. And to have this conversation right now to me is about as shocking as we can get at a point where we don't have any real growth coming right now. We got potential growth and people are looking at us to see if we're gonna make logical decisions as it relates to them coming in and invest, investing millions of dollars into this community. And what we need to do is make sure that we don't put a roadblock for folks who wanna come and invest in a city that only had about seventeen houses built between two thousand and seven and two thousand and eighteen. And I just think that we need to have a real conversation about impact fees, but this ain't the time.
Mr. Mayor, could I speak also? I think there are other ramifications. One, we have a policy right now you'd have to change, and our policy is if you're contiguous and you want water and sewer, then you annex to get it. You could change that policy, but you're basically throwing up policy decisions that are against growth in the, in the city. Uh, when you, if you did that, uh, we've got, this is a hundred and forty four units. The estimate I was given of the cost of construction per unit was somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty thousand dollars per unit on a complex of this nature. Do the math, you're probably closer to a twenty million dollar project. When you look at the avalorum tax effect of that, together with the fire assessment fees the mayor mentioned, uh, you're I don't know where the break-even point on, on, on services is, and I totally agree with the mayor that it's probably time for us to look at the impact fee scenario. But you're gonna have to do that prospectively and not in, 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 in the context of this particular unit. And you also have then the ripple effect of others, landowners, because we've also been advised that there's contiguous property to the west that may be looking at coming in uh, of a commercial nature. But it would get its continuity or con- contiguous, it would get its contin- continuity from this, this land mass. So, um, this is a, yeah.
So, so I, I could appreciate both of you guys and your, your, your compassion. But what I said was, I asked a question for that information. If I don't have the information, guess what? Those decisions have been made and been pushed. We're on the board, so we should know. Just like the impact you just gave me. That's good information to note. So, Mayor, you may be privy to that information.
Actually, I'm not privy. I just understand.
No, no, I don't want, I, I, can I talk? No, can I talk? Because the thing is.
Hold on, you asked me a question.
No, I didn't ask you a question.
You said, Mayor, you may know. I said, I don't know. I didn't know. I just know what the impacts are.
Okay, that's great, man. That's what I just said. You may know what the impacts are, but if the rest of us are sitting, well, I can say me. And I asked the question, I'm asking it sincerely so that I would know. So, don't, I don't, I don't, I, sometimes, man, uh, when we up here, you start thinking as we're, we're contractors or, or these are areas of expertise, and it's not. I can say for me, it's not mine. So I'm just like a citizen that's sitting out there that wants to know. One thing I do know is, we were just talking about our fire department is short. Our, our police department is short. Our garbage and sanitation department is short. So how are we planning on servicing them if we don't have the people? Yes, we may get more money, but we're already talking about putting money, putting money out to try to get employees and it's still not working. Okay, so those questions are valid questions, rather, some people understand already and some don't because I wanted to know. So before I make a decision and vote on it, I wanna have all the information. And that's what I was asking you, Ms. Shank. You're the financial person, so you're the go-to person to give me that. So, if we would have had a conversation, uh, city manager, you and I, or whatever, if you bought it out, there were some things we talked about. We're talking about I don't, I don't think we talk about desperation growth, but that's what it sounds like. So, this is, twenty million, that sounds good. But again, let's talk about how we're gonna be able to service the folk. And, and, and I'm done with that. And I don't need to be, I'm done with that. Thank you.
I would like to say.
We get, can we get that, Ms. Shanks, at all?
Are you finished at this point?
Ms. Shanks, can we get that information?
Commissioner Kim.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Are we looking for a motion?
No, I'm, I'm gonna finish my comments. So, first of all, I, I think there's a learning curve that comes with everything that we do sitting in here. We've all worked on learning. So part of it is, we gotta take time out to educate ourselves on some of this stuff that we begin to look at, because we're starting to build this community up. You know, and as we start talking development and some of this other stuff that comes up here, Palaca's in a very different place. I'm tired of the assumption that I get some special information as it relates to some of this stuff. I know the same thing y'all know about this project. Those guys came in here the other day and they sat in the meeting when it was canceled, and I asked questions. And so, I didn't get anything special from staff that you didn't get. But I think at the end of the day, we've got an obligation to this community as a whole. Not very long ago, I don't want anybody to be lost on it. We were the only dying city based on all this mess in the state of Florida. We're at a point where people are looking at Palaca and they're looking at opportunity. I wholeheartedly agree that we gotta be smart in the way that we grow. But I also don't think we need to put up a bunch of roadblocks as to what's in place. We approved a hundred and ninety five market rate units not so long ago. But the beauty of them developing apartments is they don't go up tomorrow. It takes a few, it's gonna probably take a couple of years before this project comes to fruition. If we can't hire staff, if we don't get past all the money flowing from COVID, they just stopped unemployment. So it's a whole bunch of folks who are getting money, who are gonna start by going to work. The country is at some point's gonna go back to a normal state. We're gonna adjust. And if we got hundreds of thousands of dollars coming in from a project into our budget, it gives us an opportunity to pay what wages are necessary for us to be able to deal with having additional places in pa- in, in place. One of the major things that we had to deal with before was not having any money. Not having the processes in place to deal with what additions come with services. Fire assessment allowed us to have a formulation which says this works for us. We've got some problems that we're solving as it relates to employee and staffing. But we can't sit here and assume that in two years, we're gonna be in that same position. There's various options from privatization or whatever else may be out there, or increasing staffing or doing what's necessary to allow this community to grow. We can't remain stagnant based on fear. What we have to do is continually educate ourselves as a commission on development, because we're gonna get more requests coming in. This is the only place left geographically where people have an opportunity to find large land masses and be able to come in. It's gonna happen regardless of whether you want it or you don't want it. The question is, will you be prepared when it comes? And that, for us, we've got a great benefit already because we have capacity in water and sewer. We already have a fire department that's set up to patrol an area all the way out to Francis. We've got police that work various areas already. Our police is already in that area. So they're already there. We've got all the pieces to the puzzle in place. Yeah, we got some cleanup to do with the pieces, but it, it exists. And we just gotta believe that the time has come for this community to advance. And I don't wanna do anything to put us in a position where folks don't have quality housing options, where folks don't have job options created. And we don't find ourselves increasing revenue within this city. where folks don't have job options created, and we don't find ourselves increasing revenue within this city. When we take, when we get those opportunities, we gotta take it. The time is coming to have a real conversation about impact fees. But impact fees alone are not gonna be the catalyst to what's going on. Development's gonna be critical to the city of Palaca as we begin to move forward. And if you're known for putting roadblocks up for people who are spending large quantities of money, guess what they do? They make U-turns. They leave. We've done, we've done that before. And that's the, that's what gets us in a position where we're financially constrained, because we didn't make it easy for people to spend money. So, we are in a great position. This commission has to work together and to move forward. Now, we're not gonna agree, but I never thought we wouldn't agree about bringing twenty million into the community in rep, in Avalon values. I just don't see where we wouldn't wanna bring in twenty million in property values to sixteen, to sixteen point nine one acres. We just gotta figure out who we wanna be, because if we just wanna be this, this town of ten thousand with a fourteen million dollar general fund, we can be that. And then we'll continue to have conversations about what breaks the budget. But if we wanna be something better, if we wanna provide some of these amenities that our citizens want, if we want people to come in and bring restaurant choices and entertainment choices and different families, and we wanna up education and we wanna reduce crime, then we gotta look at bringing in different stock. You keep doing what you're doing, you're gonna get what you get.
Well, I, I'm certainly not, um, a person who would like to put up roadblocks. Um, my, my thing was a question and clarity, my understanding. And so, um, at least that's where I'm at. Uh, and I think Commissioner Jones, I don't know, I, I don't think he meant to block anything as well. So, my thing was questioning clarity, to understand better, knowing what other, um, cities are doing and making sure that we're just not providing a lot of accommodations to a lot of the builders. A lot of the builders, they come in, they'll come in and they will get all of the incentives that, you know, the city will give in, at the city's expense. So, I wanna make sure the taxpayers are getting are, are not having to fund things that contractors come in and get their incentives and go. So they, they'll come and build and they go. So my thing is, I'm not trying to block any growth at all, but we need to have responsible growth. And we're gonna have further conversations around how we move forward with our growth. I think that's important, and we just haven't had those conversations. But again, I'm not here to block anything.
And I did all that. I, I said I want responsible growth. But those responsibilities come along with knowledge. And you may mention that we, we do need to educate ourselves, but this is a part of education's, uh, this is part of being educated right here. Um, when we're up here and we ask the questions and we have a planning director, we have a finance director and a city manager, uh, that should also have his vision that we, as collectively as a board, should be given directions to. And so, while I'm up here, I am gonna speak on how I feel. So that is what I meant about the growth, responsible growth and, and my responsibility to the citizens of Palaca, just like all of us up here, is just to know what we're doing, know what position we really are in. That money coming in is fine. I wanted to know what would be the same status as far as money-wise, how would it impact us if we only getting the, the water and sewer services? First, being that we don't get an impact fee for any building right now versus annexing a person. And then Dawn just said it. Well, right, as it speaks right now, they cannot get services without being annexing. And that's something we need to look into, you know, so-
If they're contiguous and eligible for annexation, we do extend services if they're not contiguous pursuant to a pre-annexation agreement that says when they are contiguous, they'll annex in.
Right.
But these people are already contiguous.
Okay. We can't hear you, we can't hear you.
Support subdivision of the board, and we work hard to do so. Um, one of the things that I also wanted to mention is that this property is contiguous to city limits. It would help fill in a big gap in the city limits. It's called infill development. The other thing that happens that you should be aware of is that if we spend the money to extend water and sewer lines, and Jonathan can speak more to this, I'm sure, it's much less expensive and more beneficial to do so in a more compact area. So the more dense your development is throughout the city, the less expensive it is. Even though you might be serving more people, it's in a smaller area. I don't know if that helps or not, but that's planning, planning stuff.
Yeah, I just really wanted to see-
The dollars, the dollars.
Right.
You know, so, and I appreciate you clarifying that as well about the density. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. And just for the record, sometimes we have these packets. It's three hundred pages long, four hundred pages of information. And there's a lot of information that's in there. So we're not gonna, we may miss something. So, and the last, uh, the last reading is, uh, this annexa- annexation proposal. You know, I thought about it, as I said, a hundred and forty-four units. So I had a question. At that point, I was, I voted, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and pass annexation. But as I read it, I had a question. So thus, the question come to date. So, there's nothing about my opinion that really changed, other than I said, my question was, as this board, have we started thinking about that? So that is something to think about. And this discussion, I think, was fruitful. And I don't take it personal, it's fruitful. And, and so, we carry on. Thank you.
Appreciate you letting me do that. So, we're to the annexation ordinance. We're ready to capture for the annexation ordinance.
There was a motion, a second on the floor, Madam Campbell.
Is there any further discussion? After hearing all of this, is there any further public hearing on this motion? Seeing none, we're closed. Public hearing, is there any further discussion from this commission? Question, questions call, roll call vote.
Mayor Towne.
I'm last.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Jones.
No.
Commissioner Born.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McCaskill.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Hill.
Yes. I have two resounding ordinance, motion passes.
Ordinance number twenty-one twenty-nine, and ordinance is the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palaca, Florida, be amended for Penham County Agricultural, the city of Palaca Residential, R three for the filing property, sixty-one thirty-one, pre-lying the new estate, eighteen acres of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, exempt, full official records, save seven five, page one fifteen twenty-one. Providing for severability, providing for scriven reserves, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
It's motion in the second on the floor. Here, is there anyone here for public here? Seeing no one. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Born.
Yes.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to item C, ordinance twenty-two-one dash thirty-one, amending the comprehensive plan by adding a new property rights element. First reading, transmittal here.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Hill. An ordinance in the city of Palaca, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan by adding a new property rights element, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for solid severability, providing for scriven reserves, and providing for an effective date.
Go move.
Second. For a second, we're now up the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we're closed. Public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Item D, in ordinance twenty-two-one dash thirty-two, amending appendix A fee schedule of the municipal code of the city of Palaca that pertains to fees and other charges related to chapter fifty, parks and recreation, chapter fifty-four, planning, chapter sixty-six, solid waste, chapter seventy-four, subdivisions, chapter eighty-six, utilities, chapter ninety-four, zoning, and chapter ninety-five administrative fees. First reading.
At ordinance number twenty-one thirty-two, and ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, amending appendix A of the fee schedule of the municipal code of the city of Palaca that pertains to fees and other charges related to chapter fifty of the Parks and Recreation Code, chapter fifty-four, the Land Code, chapter sixty-six, the Solid Waste Code, chapter seventy-four, the Subdivisions Code, chapter eighty-six, the Utilities Code, chapter ninety-four, the Zoning Code, chapter ninety-five, Administrative Fees Code, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for scriven reserves.
Go move. Second.
It's motion on the floor in a second. Public hearing, Ms. Kitchens. There's anyone else here for public hearing? Please dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred.
Believe the kitchens, ten twenty-seven, South Belt Street, Palaca, Florida. I looked at the agenda packet and I didn't see a strike through a copy of this ordinance. So, I asked Ms. Shank before the meeting started, how much the water and sewer and, uh, garbage was going up. And she said it was a straight six and a half percent. I thought that was about right, but I think in the future, maybe if you all could say in the, somewhere in the meeting or in the ordinance or something, the percentage that some of these things are going up. Uh, and I, I don't, six and a half percent, I'm not sure exactly how much my utility bill's gonna go up. I know that when it goes up to six and a half percent, that's what, that's the increase in the cost. But then the tax and fees get add-on, so it usually comes up to more than that. So I don't know my water bill's gonna be, when I say water, I mean water, gas, I mean water, sewer, all that together. I don't know if it's gonna go up ten dollars, fifteen dollars, twenty dollars, or thirty dollars. So I just kind of would like some clarification, maybe not tonight, because we're kind of pressed for time here and it's been kind of heated so far. Uh, but, but maybe, but maybe, you know, just some explanation for the public as to the, the main thing the public's interested in are the utilities. And so I just would like some clarification on that, roughly how much is my, you know, basic residential bill gonna go up for my utilities? And that's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public hearing? Seeing no one. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Any comments?
I have a question. As far as the, the, the rate hike for utilities, is that have, is a question. Uh, has it been set to go up percentage every year? And that's the six percent?
Staff did a projection, and this is just following suit in the product, projection that was done.
We adopted- We adopted a standard increase a few years ago. Um, we, we adopted a standard a few years ago, and that's what we've been using, um, just as opposed to just trying to come in and do a complete market adjust, m- market rate adjustment based upon what was in place. Because when we did analysis, it wasn't there. We went ahead and adopted a percentage on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna pass it on to Jonathan. That's something that him and, uh, the previous finance director had worked on together.
Um, yes, um, commissioners, as an enterprise fund, simply, and you actually have passed this by resolution a couple of different times, most recently when you adopted the fiscal sustainability plan mandated by Florida Department of Environmental Protection, like, you have to increase your rates to offset the increase in operational expenditures by resolution. Um, we did a projection a couple of years back, what that would equate to over the next five years, based upon that fiscal sustainability plan. And it was roughly six, six and a half percent every single year, so we're on pace.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Seeing no questions. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, the city manager and, and before we go to, we go to city manager administrative reports. First, I'm gonna call up the gas authority who's been waiting patiently, just because it's always a wonderful time just to have you here with us. And, uh, one of the things that we're doing is we're in an effort to become more inclusive of the gas authority as we begin to plan and get ready for our strategic planning process. Uh, we've, we've talked about, uh, getting periodic updates as to some of the things that are going on in place. But I wanted just to make sure that, uh, we give you an opportunity because you, you were here tonight, just to maybe wanna give us a kind of a quick what's going on with the gas authority.
Be happy to. Thank you for having me tonight. Very exciting. Um, let me start by saying, um, we, we lost an employee recently. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that at the beginning. Um, although she wasn't with us very long, she, uh, started at the end of June, but um, had a short illness and, uh, passed from COVID. So, although, uh, we hear about it all over, it kind of hit us at home. And, uh, we also, within the last two weeks, lost a former employee. A retired employee named, uh, Charles Ronnie Fowler, Chuck Fowler's dad. So, I don't mean to change the whole tone here, but, uh, we've, we've suffered some losses. And, uh, um, I guess part of my update would be to say that we, not too long ago, opened up our, our office for uh, people to come in and pay their bills. Not a lot of people are taking advantage of that, to be honest with you. Most people are going through the drive-through. I think they got used to that. Frankly, I'm okay with that. Uh, but it's there as a convenience for folks to come in. Mr. Mayor, I think you and I talked about that early on in COVID that, uh, might be a good thing to, to work through the drive-through. It got a little inconvenient for folks that would be out the, the drive-through, uh, at certain times of the month, but we worked through all that. Uh, another part of the COVID that I would wanna mention is, some of the folks are having trouble paying their bills. Um, gas and water. We had talked about, uh, this fund that's coming in. That might be something you might wanna consider that, um, there are some people that are having struggles with COVID and falling behind. We've done a, I think, a good job of working with those folks. We stopped turnoffs for a long time. We've worked with them to get them, try to get them caught up. We're working with a new organization or new to us called R Florida, if you're familiar. They've done a really good job of paying, uh, directly to us and, and getting a lot of that caught up. So, um, what else would I wanna say? Things are going good at the gas authority, but we're having our struggles too.
And so one of the things we wanted to do is make sure that as we started having these ARPA conversations, and there is a utility assistance component that goes along with ARPA, on that, we can definitely start to have greater conversations with as we bring back uh, ideas from the commission and the commission begins to share. And, uh, I think it's, it'll be a wonderful opportunity for the commission as individually to get a chance to sit and talk to you as well, to see what some of the desires that you have are, um, as we begin to move forward. Um, but there is a utility assistance opportunity that's there. We're delving kind of into what, what are the specifics and how, you know, would it truly work? So I think sharing those numbers, um, as it relates to the critical pieces of that, become, uh, I, I think, become a, a strong point as we move forward in, uh, in this process. But we're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Um, your former attorney serves as the city manager now, so it's always, uh-
He's always a guest.
So he's, he, he just comes for dinner. So-
Well, again, back to the R, R Florida, I just wanted to really, uh, make sure the public knew about that. We do a real good job when people are in trouble of making sure they know about it, but maybe not everybody knows.
Exactly. Mr. Holmes.
And Mayor, uh, Brett has graciously agreed to, to start attending our meetings, uh, as you stated, in the, in the interest of, um, uh, us being more inclusive of the gas authority, um, and him keeping you informed and you keeping him informed. Uh, he'll be, uh, attending, uh, as, as most of the other department heads do. I would like to mention one more thing, uh, for, for those of you who may not know, once a month, we do have a utility billing discussion with staff from the gas authority, Jonathan, myself, Ms. Shank, the, the city attorney, uh, when she tunes in, um, and can hear. And we look at the bills that aren't being, that aren't paid, the accounts that are, among other things, the accounts that are delinquent and why, and whether or not there's an adjustment that we can make in accord with the policy the city has established. And, uh, and staff, their staff works very diligently, I believe, to try to, number one, catch excessive leakage or excessive, uh, uh, water usage to try to determine if there's a reason for it, notify the, uh, consumer. And then we do adjust monthly. We look at the, the request for reductions and if there's been a leak or some sort of, uh, anomaly to take a look at that. So, we have been doing that, and they've also been looking at for a while now, alternative sources of payment. I mean, this, you mentioned one- I mean, this, you mentioned one new player in the game, but you've had others over time that you have sought assistance on behalf of your customers for, correct?
Yeah, low heat for the energy side of it, and yeah, drawing a blank for other ones for the water side, but yes, we, we try to help folks in any way we can.
That's just another example of putting people before projects, and I think it's just, it's a good thing to be able to be in the, in the position where we can consider convenience as well as the ability to accommodate during trying times and unforeseen times, to be able to make certain things happen. And we just appreciate you being here, and, and also, I think more than anything else, we want to make sure that you realize from this commission that you're a part of us, and that, and that you're welcome, and we are, and, and when we look forward to hearing about the, about the gas authority and the things that you have moving forward. Commission, anything?
Yeah, I got a question, I mean, how, how long ago did y'all start that review process?
A long time, I mean.
The, the meetings?
The utility building discussions.
Reviewing, yeah, because, I mean, I've been contacted by somebody who, who had a water leak, and they said they got a really, really large. Now, they actually, they're, they're renting, but they receive the utility bill, but the, I guess the owner would have to be responsible for the portion that, I guess, was impacted, based on the location of it, but long story short. Um, but if y'all reviewer knows, that's, that's really, really good.
We are, yeah, on a, on a monthly basis, we would sit down and talk about each individual.
We have a regularly scheduled meeting to review any issue that's come up during the preceding month.
Right.
There's an established policy as to what adjustment we can make and how we make it. But we also consider cases that kind of fall outside the, the box, I mean, your best.
Yeah, and I, and I've had two weeks myself. And so, when, when, when those water lines break and they just constantly run, like, from overnight thing, it, it really becomes really large and huge. So if we have anything, when you, when you guys review your data on a weekly basis, those feeds, you should be able to see, you know, if you feed it, if you feed it into something that graphs, that will give a re, a really good indication, and at one point, it kind of, I paid both of mine.
Yeah.
The amount of money that is generated with those hours of, of a break can really impact our, our community. So I would, and I was asking for the data, because I, I'll track it myself. I would just like to see where we're, we're really, I know y'all might be doing, you know, doing your reviews, but I really want to see that when people, because I've, I've been contacted by a number of people, that, I don't know how many make, you know, adjustments or whatever it may be, but we need to kind of at least make sure that we put something in place that we're really tracking those things and making sure that they are being taken care of.
I have an open door policy, anytime you have a, a issue that you want me to address.
Because I've been down there a couple of times, and I ask for the data, I check it myself, just shoot me over the information in an Excel file, I'll track it myself.
Yeah, and if I may ask, I did have a couple of citizens that called in a complaint, but I did call, and someone was sent out to gauge if it was a leak, and there was, there were adjustments made, but I think it was a cap on the adjustments, am I right? Yeah, so I can't say that they did send.
And they actually monitor, most of our meters are self-reading now. And believe it or not, and I don't even know how they managed to find time to do it, but they'll, they'll monitor usage on their own and contact the consumer to advise the consumer that they're seeing excessive usage. So, I mean, from what I've seen, they, they, they do a good job of trying to.
We're only human, we sometimes miss things, but we try, we try harder.
And I, I think the other part that we gotta, we remember, if you, in the, most of us, I think we were up here, at least three of us, during that time, we adopted, it was right when you first came on, Commissioner McCaskill, we adopted a new policy to specifically give additional leeway to staff as it related to dealing with, with water, with water, with water line breaks. And so we allow, based on the policy, it can be up to fifty percent reduction at, you know, at the staff level before, and if you believe that there needs to be more of a reduction put in place, it can be sent to the city manager, and the city manager can work with the gas authority director, and they can come up with the reduction in place. To give an example, we had a citizen who had an extensive bill that still would have been significant over time, and what they were able to do was to reduce that bill based upon them showing just some effort to repair. And, and they were able to help, to help the citizen out, and they had a super, a super large bill. And even in places where you have citizens who have those large bills, what they will do is actually set up a payment plan, so it doesn't have an impact on them on, in the same impact by saying, hey, pay this right away, or you're gonna be turned off. They'll work with them and set them up with a payment plan over a period of time, so that it doesn't affect them in the same way. And so there have been some efforts, it's, it's not a perfect system, but what it does is, it'll take someone who's got a three thousand dollar bill based upon what you can obviously see as a leak, and where they can literally almost pinpoint when you fixed it. And they'll, that three thousand dollar bill based upon certain things put in place, will at least put that, will put that citizen in a much greater position than before. And all that was done because, you know, we ended up in a situation a few years ago where you had a, an eighty-year-old citizen who had a water line break that wasn't obvious, because it was a slap leak. And, and after it was discovered, we realized that the policy would still create a hardship, and just the way it was written. And so we understand that there's a cost to doing business, but we also understand that at some point, we've got to make sure that we take people into account.
Thank you for mentioning them.
I also paid a very high bill on leaking toilets on one of my commercial buildings, so.
He wasn't very happy when he came into my office.
Yeah, my key point is that, when you get your.
Yes, sir. Yes.
The, the previous months or whatever is there, along with the current month, so you could see the track or the trend. So when it think, when it spikes, you should be able to kind of understand and know that there's.
When I sign off, when I sign off on a, on a refund, first thing I look for is that spike.
Yeah.
I see that spike, I know it happened, and seeing it to a pair invoice, so we're not gonna be doing it again two months from now, you know. It's, it's a huge issue, and it's, it's money, it's people's money, so we're, we're sensitive to that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for the report. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah. All I have, on a different topic, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All I have is a request, as the city may know, we continue to experience COVID-related absences, either by exposure or actual sickness. Mayor, you and I spoke along with the fire chief. We're facing a pretty significant issue at the fire department right now, and the policy we have had in place is, is going to be problematic in terms of when we allow people to return from work after exposure.
Excuse me.
So what I'm asking is that the commission,
Just go ahead.
The commission give us, give me authority to amend our return to work policy to mimic and comply with CDC guidelines, but basically, if we have a positive exposure or an exposure, excuse me, to allow a return to work after three to five days if we have a negative COVID test as a prerequisite. So I'm, I'm asking, as we see our policies change, everything changing day to day, I don't know if you saw, but I guess by executive order, the president has indicated that any employer with more than a hundred employees will be required to implement a mandatory vaccination policy, and for anyone who doesn't vaccinate, a once-a-week COVID test. Now, that's for private employers, we're sure, we haven't, we haven't been able to sort out the details to see if it applies to, to governmental entities. We know it applies to all federal entities and people doing business with the federal government, but these things change weekly, we had, or almost weekly. We had a policy where I was requiring a ten-day absence from work and a positive, I mean, a negative COVID test for return. But with things that are changing under the CDC guidelines and the practicality of our staffing, we're assuming that the incubation period is three to five days after a COVID exposure. So three to five days that a negative COVID test is, is what we're looking at going back to, to allow return to work.
No, I'll just add this, I, I think one of the things that we're starting to see, and we've seen it over the past almost two years now, really a year and a half, is the, the strategy as it relates to COVID from the CDC has continued to change. If you recall, we started out at fourteen days, fourteen days quickly became ten, ten quickly became symptom base. And symptom base has changed, it used to be, and then initially, it was, you needed two negative tests in order to return to work. So we're seeing the strategy change, we implemented an emergency policy, so that we can make sure that we provided the greatest levels of safety. We're even seeing in some places where first responders that are critical are being able to be allowed back to work even through positivity because of the necessity of having them there and the shortages that exist in some places. I just think that where we are from a governmental standpoint, we need to be able to have the leeway for the city manager's sake, to be able to say, I'll employ the standards that are adopted by the C, the, the standards of the CDC can be adopted for the purposes of being able to, to serve the citizens at the right capacities, and to be able to bring people back in less than ten days if we find that, in fact, they're no longer exhibiting the symptoms, and the CDC deems them to be eligible to come back into the working environment. And so that's where, that's really the thought process, because the, the COVID information process has changed so much. The way our, the way our emergency order was, was written, it's, it's stale compared to where we are today. And we just got to advance because COVID knowledge has advanced, even though it's still conflicting in some places, it's still far different than it was when we adopted this back at the, in the spring of twenty twenty. And so it, it's something that has to be addressed as an emergency item. So if it's something that the commission is okay with, I'd like to have a discussion on it, and also if you want to move forward with adopting the CDC standards as our basis, then we would need a motion to that effect, and a motion to accept it as an emergency item.
I'll make a motion that we accept this item as an emergency item.
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Now, moving into the discussion of how we want to move forward, are there any concerns or comments from the commission? I think this is a critical piece. So what's, what's currently the recommendation of the CDC?
I think they have now backed down to three to five days, which is the incubation period. Based upon a negative COVID test for return.
Do both the chiefs want to comment as well?
While they're coming, uh, Mr. Holmes, I would make a recommendation that you look at what was implemented by the school district. They have a pretty good flow chart that we probably would be able to mimic, if you have not had that conversation. They have a flow chart of how, how employees can return back to work, symptoms or without. And I'd be more than happy to provide that to you.
Yeah, it's the decision tree that.
Yeah, the decision tree.
As well as the ability to, to social distance and wear the proper.
Yes.
Chief, you got anything you want to add?
No, sir, it's just the, the policy as it's written now, it's just, it takes out, with one exposure, it takes out the whole shift. And so that's where we're at, we don't have, we have one positive. Knock out whole script, so that continues to happen.
On the contact tracing? Find out, when you like.
Contact, the contact tracing is kind of.
But I think most of places have stopped doing a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah, the funding, what happened was, I, I think in a lot of places, what we're seeing is, once the funding started changing, when the CARES Act funding changed, the level of contact tracing has really changed from a health perspective. And what the other part is, because there's been more information to show that the virus is airborne, people have actually gone away from the tracing in the same manner.
Let me ask this question. So if one of our firefighters, or some of our employees get COVID, do we have a responsibility to contact the people that they made contact with prior? I mean, where, where, where's that obligation lying? A, a city attorney?
Ultimately, on calls they should have.
Well, so far, there's been a lot of waiver of liability as far as the spread of COVID. You know, I mean, the federal government, previous president implemented lots of executive rules that would waive liability for this. So as far as whether you have a personal responsibility, I don't see that, but what we have been doing here at the city is we continue to take temperatures, so if we have somebody who is, then we have been, we at least know who has been exposed and who's been there.
Well, I was sort of thinking on the lines of this, say we have a, a police officer that worked a twelve-hour shift, somewhere along the shift, they contact, contracted. What we sort of like backtrack, chief, and from that shift, go back and say, okay, you had twelve calls, and we maybe need to contact those folk along those calls that we may have had contact with, I mean.
We, we have had a situation, or a couple situations similar to that, to where we have had a couple of our officers contract COVID. What we do is we identify basically who worked that night, who may have had a lengthy amount of exposure, and they are listed currently on our policy as to possible contact exposure. And then we, we allow them to stay out until they can get a negative test, and as long as they're not exhibiting any symptoms. But what, what we can't do is say when they, they contracted that, the virus, it could have been during a twelve-hour shift, or it could be before, a couple of days prior, to be exact. So what we do is we just identify during that time, and if they're exhibiting any symptoms, following what the CDC guideline says and what our current city policy is, and we adjust from there.
I would just continue what I was gonna say earlier, was that the guys on scene are, are wearing a mask. So they, they should be protecting the citizens, but it's when they get back in the truck with those guys that now, we're worried about us being spreaded around the department, not so much to the citizen.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll make. I would like to go on the record and say this, if you don't mind, Mayor. Of course you don't, all right, with all jokes aside, all jokes. Now, yeah, this is disclaimer, no, on a serious note, about, because Allegra Kitchen made this comment about, you know, what she saw up here, let me, what you saw up here is passion between the mayor and I. There's no hard feelings, there's no animosity, and we're, we're passionate about what we do for our community. I can speak for myself, and I know he really is. The mayor, he brings knowledge, experience, compassion, and leadership to this board. I know that, and I think everybody in this room knows that. I'm the junior person on this dice, so with that, I'm gonna have questions. And people that know me personally know that I'm passionate about what I'm talking about. So I really get irritated if somebody cut me off purposely, not on purpose. So when we have exchanges, it's all with compassion and the spirit of doing the right thing. So Nick, you could quote that in the paper.
That wasn't even, that wasn't even the right time to even say that, but anyway, that was not even the right time to say that. That, how you gonna break, can, can we go on what we were supposed to?
Back to where, back to where we were.
We still.
Not, not. Emotion, not emotions. We're entertaining emotionally relates to COVID policy.
I've made a motion that we relinquish the, oh, we give the city manager full authority to, what the word?
Follow CDC standards.
To follow CDC, CDC standards, or come up with the best standards that work for the City of Placa.
I second.
What are you second?
Your motion to allow, to allow the city manager to go by CDC guidelines.
There's motion on the floor in a second, let's stop while we have it. Is there any further discussion on this, this is comfortable today. Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Any for, for chief, Mayor, if I could. You were the last person. Chief Taylor wasn't here earlier, when we had the honor of the proclamation for nine eleven. But I did want to make sure that the commission was invited to the ceremony on Saturday, and it will begin as, as previous years. Before, it will begin at ten o'clock, they are arriving at nine thirty, actually ceremony. They are arriving at nine 30. Actually ceremony begins at nine 50. Uh, they are arriving at nine 30 and it will be held again at the county building. So I just wanted to take that time, uh, wanted to say thank you for the proclamation and to make sure you guys were aware and invited to the ceremony on Saturday.
Thank you. And your ladder truck will be there with the flag up.
Hey. A ladder truck came in handy. Any, any comments from legal at this point? Any?
No, sir.
Any comments from planning? Anything, Ms. Walsh? Ms. Shank? Ms. Krantz?
Um, I just want to thank you, thank you to you guys for what you do. And I want to wish a special happy birthday to Commissioner McCaskill next Wednesday.
Birthday next Wednesday.
Happy birthday to.
Ms. Jones, you have anything?
No, I don't.
Ms. Griffith, Mr. Griffith? I think Mr. Griffith's done. Mr. Yul?
Nothing out here, sir.
Mr. Cut right. He's gone. Did I miss anybody? I already hit Ms. Jones. Ms. Fuller, you got anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner McCaskill, I'm.
I'll make it short. Thank everyone for the birthday shout out. Hopefully if I see Wednesday, I will be 50 years old. And I also want to thank the city for the love and support that everyone showed to me and my family as we experienced the loss of my grandmother, Katie McCaskill. Thank you all so much.
I can do this. Commissioner Borum?
Um, it's going to be short up. I went to Publix to get, um, Commissioner McCaskill some, um, candles for her cake, but they didn't only, they only had 49. I was up to the numbers.
She's, she's in the club with, since we're, I'll stay on the 50 year olds. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Said enough.
Yes, you did.
All right. At least we can laugh when it's all said and, uh, Commissioner Jones, you got anything else to start off? Uh, Commissioner Campbell, your turn.
I'm just thankful to staff for the flexibility and the commitment that they've had with this whole budget cycle and making the accommodations of, um, the commission to make sure that we get the information that we need. So definitely kudos to you all. And I will be just as happy once we complete this process as you will.
For me, um, I'm excited about what's going on in Palaca. And for those of you who think that me and Jones are on the same script every time, I'm glad we got an opportunity to truly disagree. In public because people got, people have to realize that this commission has five distinct personalities. And the reality of it is we all have passions that are different from one another. But we all have the same love and that's for this community. Jones and I have been disagreeing since we were little kids and, uh, I think we're going to disagree as old men. He's much older. And so, um, and so those are the things that I, I, I see happening here. But the, but the other part of this is, is it's good when you can argue about growth because there are a whole bunch of communities that wish they were in this position right now. But I also think that, you know, the commentary that has come from this commission as it relates to where we're going, what we're experiencing, how we want to see things happen. We are light years ahead of where we were six years, six and a half years ago when we sat, put on this stage. And it's changing and it's growing every day. And this community is blessed to have people like my four compadres who sit up here, who love people, who love Palaca. This is a hard job to do. We've got great staff and a great team assembled. But, and it's a thankless job. But at the end of the day, we don't do it for personal accolades. We do it because we care. And if you care, your passion is sometimes going to live a lot harder, going to show a lot harder than it does in other situations. There's not one person up here that's not passionate about what they wanted, what they believe is best for this community. And there's nobody up here who's not a fighter for the people, for themselves, and who's passive and will not have their voice be heard. And that's what we need in Palaca. We need people who will boldly stand up and put forth a vision that's new and refreshing that allows the gem of the St. John's River to shine. So I don't apologize for having passion. I'm not going to apologize for any of that. And nobody in this commission is ever going to have to apologize for being passionate and loving Palaca. Because we could all be somewhere else, but we choose to be here and we choose to stand with the great people that work in this community. And we're going to watch the gem of the St. John's River shine. And so that's it in a nutshell. And I just want to personally thank every commissioner that sits up here for taking the time out and sacrificing yourself and time with your family to do what a lot of other folks would, won't sacrifice and do. And that's the work for the people. And sometimes we get beat up by the same people that we fight the most for. But we do it because we choose to serve. And that's where we are. And so with that being said, I'll end by saying, again, we're always better together. And the family that don't fight don't last. And so again, we'll continue, we'll continue to push forward our passions as we continue to put people before projects.